Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, May 18th Public Session of the Halton District School Board. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance and note that everyone is here. And we do have a couple of extra people to introduce, so I'm going to turn it over briefly to our two student trustees to do a very brief introduction, which they'll continue on later.
Yep, I would like to introduce our two new student trustees for next year, Zaid Hajali and Dasha Metropolitansky.
Welcome to both of you, and we'll hear a little bit more about you in the student trustee reports. I would like to remind everyone that we are being video voice recorded and streamed onto the net to the thousands of followers, yes, make sure you wave to mom and dad, and that I'd also like to ask if you haven't already, please turn anything that makes noise to mute or off. That would be appreciated. So, the first item for tonight is the approval of the agenda, but before we do that, I'm going to ask for some amendments. The delegation that was listed, we did receive the information, part of the information in time, but the person has withdrawn, is probably going to come to the committee of the whole meeting. So, that is not going to be part of the meeting tonight, so that will be omitted. And we're asking that item 4.2.4, the Centre Gary Allen present, update be moved up to presentations. So, could I have a mover to approve the agenda as amended? Trustee Garbent seconded by trustee Reynolds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. So, are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we have no delegations, but we do have a presentation. So, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Miller.
The Director.
The Director. Superintendent Miller. I am going back, sorry, my brain's not, I'll refocus, okay. I'd like to turn it over to Director Miller, and he will introduce our guest tonight. Thank you, Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. It's my great pleasure tonight, you have a report before you, but it's my great pleasure tonight to introduce to you the new Chief Administrative Officer of the Centre for Skills and Development. It's a, it's a big, big job, and you've read the report, you look at the number of students they serve, both adults, new Canadians, and all sorts of people looking for a second career, or trying to get apprenticeships, or skills, and trades, and all sorts of stuff. So, it's, it's a great pleasure, and I think the Centre is very, very lucky to have Lisa, and I think the HDSP is very lucky to have the Centre, because we work very intimately, closely, I guess is probably a better way to describe it, closely with the Centre, so...
Director Miller?
Yeah.
You actually haven't said the person's name yet.
I know. So, it's Lisa Rizzato. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to Lisa to make a few comments and around the report, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, thank you Stuart. So, the Centre is a not-for-profit organisation, we are an affiliate of the Halton District School Board, we have three program areas that are our mandate. So, we do employment services, we do English as a Second Language and immigrant services, and we offer skilled trades. And we offer all of the programs within six areas in Halton. So, we do Burlington, Melcroft, Abbeywood, Milton, and Clarkson. So, those are sort of the, the program areas, and we are, we do serve adults, as well as we have programs that are directed to youth at risk. So, our Get in Gear program would be a program that is directed at youth, as well as our Doorways program, which is a literacy and upgrading program that we offered, we offer in our employment services umbrella. So, that's just a quick synopsis of, of the work that the Centre does.
And I would just add that Lisa has a rather unique background, coming from both an HR and a financial area, so it's kind of like Deborah and Lucy joined at the hip, so...
Yes. Well, that's wonderful, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
As, from, from the board of trustees, we welcome you, and congratulate you on your position, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, same here.
Is there any comments or questions representative tonight, trustee Reynolds?
Thank you through the chair, oh, so welcome. And I, just looking in your crystal ball, what would you say is the biggest opportunity put before you in your new role here for the Centre?
Given the influx of Syrian newcomers that are going to enter in the Halton area, and we are the largest service provider of settlements and immigrant services in Halton, so it's an opportunity, it's a great opportunity for us to expand the services that we offer, so language classes, working with settlement information specialists, and then hopefully turning it into an employment opportunity that would funnel through our skilled trades. So, I think there's an opportunity to serve those clients in all three of our program areas, and the Centre is working hard to integrate all three of our programs to the clients, it is a seamless process for clients, and they're getting the service that they need.
Thank you, trustee Harvey Hope. Thanks for you, Madam Chair. I know a few of the trustees went to visit the Centre a while ago, and I note here that they're moving both pieces, and so I guess I'm going to put a plug in for a new tour once you've unpacked, and as well as the address, because I know a few people who need to attend the location, but I don't know where it is yet. So, I have seen the sign for the Clarkson one every once in a while, because that's out in my neck of the woods, but the main location, I'm intrigued by this North Service Road, South Service Road thing. So, just to put a plug in for those of us that didn't go before, and the ones that did, seeing the new location should be interesting.
So, the move is happening in a staged approach, so on the South Service Road, we will house our administration, employment services, and our EIS, the immigrant department, and then skilled trades is moving to the North Service Road. And we are planning to have a launch and an open house in September, we're going to use the summer to get settled, and to move, move both areas, one is moving in June, one is moving in August, so definitely stay tuned for, for that information.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for our presenters tonight? Seeing none, is that the full presentation, Director Miller?
Yes, because you, you had the report, Principal Tara Connor from Gary Allen was going to come this evening, but was unable to make it, but you'd seen her a couple of months ago, and it's not, what's in here is nothing really new. Part of the reason for that was to show the linkage and the work together, that the Centre and the HDSP, we do around adult learners and skilled trades, and all those other really neat things for, for people seeking second careers, or never got off, drowned on a first career, right? And I just want to comment on Lisa's, what she said around the Syrian refugees, I think it's an area that the board, that we need to look at, and Robbie, Superintendent Etoff and I have talked about, you know, with the Welcome Centre, cannot become a one-shop, one-stop, one-stop shopping centre, where the families come in, and we process the kids, and, and the Centre helps with the, the families, and with jobs, and so on, so that's something that we'll be talking a little bit more extensively about in the fall, because there, there, there is an influx of refugees from Syria. And I would add that it's not just Syrian refugees that we've had, we've always had refugees in this board, we've had Palestinian refugees, and, and many coming in, and the Centre also works with their families as well, so...
Thank you. And there are no further speakers, so we thank you for coming out tonight, Lisa, and we look forward to working with you and the Centre.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, our next item is the minutes of the May 4th Board Meeting. Can I have a mover? Trustee Reynolds seconded by trustee Garbent, is there any discussion on the minutes? Trustee Reynolds, or, sorry, trustee Collard?
Yes, I did want to have an amendment to the, to the minutes, and I'm going to read the amendment into the record, so that they will be verbatim in this week's minutes. So, the amendments I'm requesting are to 4.2.2, motion to rescind M11-0216. A. Collard indicated that she would request S. Miller to speak to Report 16072 before making her comments. S. Miller spoke to the intent of the motion and timing with respect to the budget process, he suggested trustees may want to withdraw the motion at this time in favor of the development of an admin procedure that would outline the fulsome process and critical path for the clarity of all. A. Collard indicated her intent to withdraw item 4.2.2 at this time, pending the development of an administrative procedure. A. Harvey Hope requested consideration for apparent policy related to the admin procedure. 4.2.3, motion to rescind M11-0213. A. Collard indicated that she would be withdrawing this motion, and requested S. Miller speak to Report 16073 before making her comments. S. Miller spoke to the timing of the development of the multi-year plan, the resulting operational plans, and the timing in context with the budget process as outlined in this motion. He suggested the timing for the operational plan could also be integrated into the new admin procedure. K. Graves and A. Harvey Hope suggested the report be revised for the May 18th meeting to suspend the motion M110213 for the current year, pending the development of the new multi-year plan. A. Collard agreed to revise the report as suggested.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes as amended. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. So, our next item is approval of business transacted in private session, and I believe we have a couple items.
Yes, we have three. The first, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board accept the tender from Tambro Construction Limited in the amount of... In the amount of $12,135,000, as contained in tender number RFT1678, for the construction of the new Martin Street Public School in Milton, Ontario, subject to final ministry approval to proceed. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve a budget of $14,763,596 for the construction of the new Martin Street Public School. This project is to be financed as follows: by capital priorities funding of $11,403,739; full day kindergarten funding of $988,568; and proceeds of disposition of $1,521,557 as allocated by the ministry in May 2014, subject to final ministry approval to proceed; demolition funding of $484,022 as allocated by ministry in December 2015; and educational development charges in the amount of $365,710, and I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Daniele, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you. The next item.
Thank you, this one is easier to read. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the audit plan for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2016, prepared by the board's external auditors, Deloitte LLP. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the 2016-2017 internal audit plan, prepared by the board's internal auditor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the 2016-2017 regional internal audit plan, prepared by the regional internal auditor. And I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Harvey Hope, any comments or questions? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. Just to acknowledge the, the good work that goes in of the business services staff, we are attempting to bring more transparency to the audit committee, and we have had the beginnings of open session and closed session, and in the fall, we will do our first full open session of audit committee with an open session report that will come to the board, but as a medium-term measure, we have these motions coming fully out in public session. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you. Another item?
The third item involves a personnel matter, and I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Collard, any discussion? Seeing none. I don't think this item's on there. We have a pause, does somebody want to do the time song? Should have a button on here, right, that makes noise? This is where we'd have a commercial, right? It would be the Halton District School Board, right? We'd advertise all the great things our students do.
It should be up there.
Yeah.
It should be up there.
Yep, it's there. Okay, that'd work too. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously, thank you. Are there any other items tonight?
No, that's okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we are now up to the order paper. Is there any comments and questions on the order paper tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our action items for tonight. The first item is the Code of Ethics Draft Policy. Trustees Collard and Vice Chair Graves, Report 16082 revised on page 10 of your board package. Would either trustee Collard or Vice Chair Graves care to speak to this before I read the motion?
I believe this is fairly straightforward, and if there are any questions, I'm sure that Executive Officer McFadden can answer them.
Thank you. So, I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board Codes of, Code of Ethics Policy as appended in Report 16082 be posted on the board's website for public input for a period not less than 25 days, and any input returned to the board for consideration at the second board meeting in June 2016. Moved by trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Papin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much, and thank you for your report, Executive Officer McFadden. Short and concise. All right, so the next item is the Community-Based Facilities Enhancement Policy. Director Miller, Report 16077 on page 12 of your board package. Director Miller.
Through, through your Chair Amos, to all trustees, the report's before you, the draft policy generated no responses, so we're, we're asking for approval.
Thank you, so I'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the Community-Based Facility Enhancements Policy as appended to the Report 16077. Moved by trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee Garbent. Is there any discussion? Trustee Harvey Hope.
You know how you read it 15 times, and then that last time you read it, anyway. On the last page, 5D, I'm just wondering whether instead of due to nature, it should be depending on the nature, because I think the intent here was to say that depends on how many we get, and how big they are, and all that kind of stuff, rather than because of the size, the admin council, so I just thought maybe that would be a better word. Because I, I fully want us to have as many, I want you to have that problem, but anyway. And the other question I had, which was just a point of clarification, was to take into another realm, the administrative council definition, I'm kind of surprised it's not in our overarching policy, and if it's not, maybe we should make sure it gets there. It can stay here, it's just that, the reason why these definitions were here for ones that weren't actually in the parameters report, the policy development and review policy, and so if we've missed admin council in that one, we probably should put that in. So, I'll just loft that over to our PB&amp;G Chair to add that in for the next round of things, but I'm looking forward to seeing how this policy gets off the ground, and I appreciate all the work that our subcommittee chairs, trustee Reynolds and trustee Garbent, and our Superintendent Cullen, and Ms. Westerhoff helped us to get this all done, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
I just, through you Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope, I like your, your change for D, so we will do so.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to express my gratitude to the trustees that worked on this subcommittee, as well as Superintendent Cullen and other staff people, and I noticed that there's an annual date review annually in March, and I think it'll be great to get some experience utilizing this policy as it is here, and, and then see where to, once people are, once it's hit the street and people are using it.
Thank you. So, this was moved and seconded, so there's no further speakers, so, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. It's done, so, go ahead, Vice Chair Graves.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody on that, it's been a long road, I don't know if you remember, this has been on the order paper for quite some time, and so it was really great to see it hit the public, and it was kind of like a child that you've raised, and we all, we spent a lot of hard work on it, our group, so thanks to everyone on that, for that.
I totally agree, thank you. So, our next item is the motion to suspend M110213. Trustee Collard, Report 167073 revised on page 15 of your board package. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. As discussed at our last meeting, it makes sense for us to be suspending this motion this year because of the development of the multi-year plan, which will not be complete until June, and so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you.
And I so move.
Thank you. Can I have a seconder? Trustee Gray, any discussion? Director Miller.
I want to thank, thank all trustees, in particular trustee Collard, for putting this there, this will make, this makes a lot of sense for us to do, and we will have an operating plan to use sometime in the, one of the September board meetings, so we'll have it done by then.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you. So, the next item is one of the highlights of our evening, our student trustee reports. Trustee Schneider and Sahai.
Good eve, good evening, everyone. We have a lot to get through, so we'll try to keep this concise, but first and foremost, we had our student trustee elections, and we had two successful candidates who are with us here tonight, as we mentioned before, Zaid and Dasha, who are in the back there, so Jovan and I are just going to read a little introduction about them, and hopefully you'll get to know them, and have a great time working with them next year. So, I'll just start off with Dasha. So, Dasha was a legislative page at the Legislative Assembly of Ontario, and she was also, or she is a member of the Speakers Bureau for the Because I Am a Girl program run by Plan Canada. She's also a summer student and youth advisor at the Halton Industry Education Council, founder and co-president of the WAS mock trial team, senior executive of the WAS debate club, and a member of the Canadian National Debate Team. Yeah, so she's been a speaker at many things, including breakfasts, the YMCA Community Breakfast for Peace, Halton Our Kids Network, Milton Youth Advisory Committee, National Conference for Positive Youth Development, and more. For, in terms of her plan for being a student trustee, she wants to help students with diverse backgrounds and diverse educational needs, use her leadership and communication skills to promote productive collaboration between students and the HDSP, and support HDSP mandate to provide the highest quality of education. So, I'd like to welcome Dasha, and hopefully she'll bring all of her vast talents to the HDSP and do a great job.
I would just caution trustees about getting into a debate with Dasha, I've seen her in action.
I would like to also introduce Zaid Hajali, he's a great Latin student at Abbey Park High School. So, Zaid has involved in many sports in his, in the community at school, football, captain of the soccer team, basketball, and rowing with the Toronto Argonauts, volleyball, tennis, and dragon boating. Zaid has been actively involved with student, student government for, throughout elementary school and into secondary school, where he now serves as vice president of the Abbey Park Student, Student Council. He plays music, trombone, bass, clarinet, and guitar, and he has a passion for medicine and pharmaceuticals, where he currently serves as a gold level pharmacy technician at Shoppers Drug Mart Pharmacy. Zaid, in general, is, he's gained, he's also been part of Student Senate this past year, and he's been exposed to many new perspectives through Student Senate, and he wants to take those learnings that he's gained this year and implement them in his role as student trustee, and, I think that's it.
That's good.
That's good.
So, we'll be transitioning both Dashia and Zaid. And their term starts August 1st. So, throughout this time, for the rest of our term, we'll be showing them the ropes and everything. So, feel free to talk to them today, get to know them, because you'll be working with them the next year when sadly Jovan and I leave to go off to university. So... Okay. So... Yes. The second thing that we have to talk about is this, our last Thursday, we had the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium. It was a huge success. We had three, like about 300 attendees, which was a huge, huge turnout. I think the biggest that we've had in the past. And this was actually our 15th anniversary. So, this conference has been running for 15 years. This year, we decided to focus on transitions, make it a little more relevant for our students elementary going to high school and high school going to post-secondary. So, we started off the day with a keynote, which was a student from Waterloo Software Engineering. And she talked about, the theme of her keynote was survival and about resilience and failure, bouncing back from failure, and being a leader really, and also altruism in what you do. So, the students really enjoyed the speaker and came up to me and her after and said that they were very inspired by it. Then there were workshops for, separately for secondary, they had panels, whereas elementaries had workshops. So, the secondary panels, there was a STEM panel, which had various engineers, people in science, the science industry, and designers. And it was, I actually sat in in the panel, and I learned a lot from sitting in. And it was super informative. And the students are, and people, they were young people in the industry as well. So, they had lots of experiences to share. There was also a panel on applying to post-secondary, where students learned, or more younger high school students learned a lot about how to apply to university. Whereas, we felt like maybe we were thrown into applying this year all at once. And they get a little bit of prep. And also, a university life panel, where post-secondary students talked about what university and college is like. Yeah. So, you can talk about the elementary panel?
So, the elementary side, we had a workshop on mental health and time management. And we had another one, basically acting as a, how to transition from a leader from elementary school into secondary school, because that's a massive, massive transition for our elementary students. We also had a workshop dedicated for French immersion students, where we had an entire class, or two classes come, French immersion classes come and learn about what force trail. And they both came and learned about what opportunities they have for them in high school. We had another workshop on public speaking. Another cool one, this one I liked, was high school secrets. So, learning about all the cool programs and stuff that we have here in high school that elementary kids, when they enter into high school in grade nine, they kind of hid in from them. And extracurriculars. And so, I had the opportunity to sit in on almost all of these workshops and listen to the senators presenting to the students. And the response, the response from the elementary students who were attending those workshops was absolutely amazing. They enjoyed the workshops. They felt that they were getting all, all cool, important information that they wouldn't have gained if they hadn't come to the conference. And most of them were really interested on how to become part of Senate, which is what we want. That was a major. That's one of our goals all the time, to make sure we're always promoting Student Senate. But we had a lot of people, elementary students coming and asking me how to become involved in this, because it was just a really amazing day for student leadership.
Yeah. So, we targeted the elementary students, especially going to secondary, to encourage them to talk to their principals about joining Student Senate. All of the workshop, the entire day, was put on by our Student Senate. And they worked very hard this second half of the year to do that. The second half of our day, we ran our student voice report, surveys, and consultations, where we had 10 survey questions posed that was discussed and logged. And all that quantitative and qualitative results are being compiled and will be put into a report and presented to the board. Just of some data on the opinions of students and have some actual tangible student voice to reference to. So, that was our day. It was very successful. One last thing is Jovan and I, and along with Zaid and Dashia, are attending our Ontario Student Trustees Association's annual general meeting, which is next week, from Thursday to Sunday, Saturday, Sunday. And there, that's when we transition our new incoming student trustees. And they get to learn about the organization, the role, get some professional development on how to be a student trustee, Robert's rules, boardroom basics. There's tons of professional development and speakers. The Minister of Education, Liz Sandals, will be there. We also have a lieutenant governor, I believe, coming. And it's going to be a great conference. Also, at the conference, there is a special thing, because it is the anniversary for the organization. We're having, inviting board members to come for a presentation on all about Osteo, our organization, and invited to the gala. And that's on the next Friday. So, if you're interested in attending that as a trustee or anybody here at the board, you can contact me or Susan. And we'll send out that info. We would love if you guys could learn about, more about our organization and what we do and the importance of the work we do. And also, come to the gala and celebrate the anniversary with us. So, that's about it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your report tonight. And I'm sorry I missed the conference. I had planned on going, but I wasn't able to get there. But I had heard it was phenomenal. Like, just from what I heard, the people there were just so inspired and so involved. It's just great. So, thank you for all your hard work on doing that. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you so much. Fantastic report. And Zaid and Dashia, you've got big shoes to fill. But I know that you will fill them quite admirably. I have a question around the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium. I know that it was a mix of elementary and secondary. And I just wondered how that, those numbers broke down. Did you have primarily secondary, primarily elementary, or was it pretty much half and half?
No, not even close to half and half. We had maybe 250 elementary students, because schools brought their entire classes to come. Whereas, the secondary interest was 50, which was, which was hard enough for us to get. We really strove for marketing towards the secondary students this year. We made posters, put up in guidance, sent out to principals. But unfortunately, secondary students do not like missing class. And I can understand that. That's why we changed the theme of the conference this year to transitions, to make it a little more relevant to secondaries as well. But we are going to look at analyzing whether or not the conference is necessary to be open to secondaries next year. I know we were debating that last year. And we decided to do one more year with this new initiative to get more, spark more secondary interest. But we'll definitely be discussing that with our incomings and with each other, whether or not it's necessary to have secondaries there next year.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
You always have a thought in mind. And then you say something, and then you want to... My question, a couple of questions, was, was the keynote taped? Because it sounds like that the content in the keynote would be useful to have other people have it. And if you didn't tape it this year, perhaps that might be something, I know there have often been a few at the OPSA conferences, where I'm like, especially the one with the female astronaut, which I think she was also at yours. No, Natalie. So, whether or not that's something you could think of, because then if you could sort of spread it around, a link to or whatever, then more people who might not be able to come for the whole day might have, get a gloom of knowledge from it. Also, could you do it on a PD day in April? There's usually one that elementary and secondary have together. And so, perhaps that's something you might want to look at as far as that missing a day. And since you're talking about two sets of trustees going to the Osteo Conference, and I know we made a motion a while back to pay for trustees to occasionally go, student trustees to go to those conferences to make sure you had the budget for it. But they don't have a budget yet. So, I'm wondering how that's playing out. And do we need a motion to cover the new student trustees to attend? And I presume it's in Toronto if you're inviting us.
Yeah. I believe that our professional development, we have budgeted within our student trustee. It's not coming out of the professional, the trustee general.
No, I meant, you have your own. The new ones, the new trustees don't have, have a budget yet. So, do you end up paying for, each of you paying for two sets in your own budget? And if that is the case, then perhaps we could go, going forward. I know we talked about making sure we know what the ongoing costs are, to make sure that that budget is relevant and to make sure that it's covering the things it's supposed to. And it seems a little unfair that the outgoing trustees always have to have enough left in their budget to pay for the incoming trustees going to the conference. So, you know, perhaps, I mean, it may only be $1,000 or something. I don't know, depending on where they hold this conference. But it's the principle of the thing.
Superintendent, or you go ahead.
Through the chair, there is the trustee Carrie Ford for professional development. I know it is for the non-student trustees, but that may be one area you may want to consider. I don't know offhand. But I believe there's between $13,000 and $40,000 in that account.
You may, you may find that you haven't used your budget anyway. So, you may find that you're okay with that. But I'm just saying is that, on a matter of principle, you shouldn't not go to something in January, because you're holding off to pay for the new trustees coming.
Yeah. So, this has typically been the process every year. We have two incoming student trustees for the outgoing. So, I believe it's accounted for. We have money in our budget for them this year. And it hasn't been a problem in the past years. But if the appropriate people want to look at that for modifications, we will never say no to more contributions to student voice.
As long as, Director Miller first.
Trustee Schneider, am I one of those appropriate people?
Trustee Harvey Hope.
The reason why I ask is a few years ago, the Halton Youth Symposium was actually coming out of the student trustee budget and not coming out of the board fund. So, we changed that. That may be why you actually have money left over. So, perhaps we, that was enough of a change to ensure that you could, because in the past, they would have actually run out of fund, anyway.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, thank you very much for your report tonight. And thank you to Dashia and Zaid for coming and introducing yourselves. And we look forward to working with you. But we still will hang on to these guys for a little bit longer. Okay. So, we're now up to notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. As you all know, we're going through the process of putting together a new multi-year plan. And as part of our multi-year plan, we have three goal areas, student, staff, and system. And I mentioned at one of our workshops that we don't have a goal area for trustees. And so, I would like to bring forward a motion at a future meeting addressing putting together goal areas for trustees that reflect the multi-year plan. And I'm just giving notice of that this evening.
Thank you. So, you'll forward that to Gail, please? Thank you. Are there any other notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, we'll now go to our action items for June 1st. And the first is fix the finances campaign, report 16090, which I will speak to. Sure. I'm passing the gavel. Well, they can't speak to it till I've spoken to them. Thank you. So, the reason I brought this motion forward was because of a concern regarding the, there's a couple, there's a couple pieces of the puzzle. First, that the fact that we're the lowest funded board in the province. And the second is, we've been struggling to try and make sure that we're supporting all students equally and fairly. And with the reduction to our high needs grants for students with special needs, that has become very much of a challenge. And with losing over $8 million over a four-year period, we, the last two years, tried to cover it from other areas within the board, but we haven't. But now, it's becoming more of a struggle. So, I think we need to ask our community and SEAC as a partner to help make the government and our MPPs and all those people aware of what our concerns are and to start a campaign to try and ask them if they can help fix the finances. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your vice chair to chair, I'm certainly supportive of any kind of initiative that helps to inform the public about how public money is allocated and some of the realities that HDSB faces, such as the fact that we are the lowest funded board and that we, along with other boards, are experiencing cuts to our special education. The only suggestion I have is perhaps around the name. I like the name that's used by the other board in your report that's taken. It's, it speaks a little bit more directly to what the issue is. So, perhaps if we can consider that, that would be something.
I'm quite open to trying to pick a better name. Vice Chair Graves and I were brainstorming about trying to pick a name. And we liked what the other board had, but we couldn't take there. So, we had to pick something else. So...
Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Vice Chair Graves. While I support the notion and the idea of raising the profile of this issue, I believe that it's important, and I know a lot of work has been done to liaise and work with our MPPs. But I feel that simultaneously with a public awareness campaign, if we go this route, that it's important that we continue to reach out to our provincially elected officials to continue the dialogue in this regard. Because it's not going to do us any good in the long run, I feel, to sour that relationship by going to the press. And if I was, I mean, we're in that position too, as elected officials, that we, I personally would much rather people push and continue that dialogue than to go a route like this. However, I understand the pickle that we're in. And we really need to do what we need to do to make sure that our students are well, well-cared-for. So, that's my dilemma. If we could somehow marry this with, or use this as a tool to speed up that conversation or something, I, you know, I don't have a particularly good answer. Just, I'd like to see it more multipronged approach. Thanks.
I've actually had a conversation with one of our local MPPs and have reached out for a potential meeting with trustees in September, after we know some of what's happened around our budget process. So, that is something that I was going to be bringing for information after we had some more concrete timing and that kind of thing. But this was something aside, because I believe our community does not know what's at the reality of what's going on. And I think that's causing some of what are the concerns that are happening.
Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through Vice Chair. I would echo the comments of my colleague, trustee L. Harrison. I, well, I believe that trustees, the domain of, I want to say advocating to our government partners partners is very important. There's something that concerns me, and this is regarding the public's awareness piece. And I would, I would ask that we take consideration on having this conversation with our CAC advisory group. I don't know what the timing is, but our CAC meets on June 7th, and I hope that that would be brought forward to them. Because of the, I want to say, the public awareness piece of it, I'm sure that they would have a perspective that would, that would be important to collaborate on.
That's part of why they're included in the motion, because I believe they need to be a part of the, the solution.
Right, sorry, but do we have timing for the meeting, for the decision? Yeah, we're good? No, we're not. Yeah, so we're meeting, CAC is meeting June 7th, I believe?
Well, this could be deferred till the 15th.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. First of all, I want to applaud the sentiment behind this. I really appreciate, we've done a lot of talking about it, and to see somebody actually do something and put it into paper, I very much appreciate. That being said, though, are we going to get something back that tells us what this is going to look like? Like, right now, it's just an idea to do a public awareness campaign, but are we going to get any information as to who's going to do that? Any budget costs, any of what the plan of action is? If we can get a little more meaty details, I think this, I think the sentiment here is absolutely fantastic, and I love that we're moving forward with something, but I just need... I'm done now. I just need a little more detail, if possible, when it comes back to us.
My thought had been, if the board supported this, then we could then try and decide what it would take, the format it would take, because I don't believe that, even, while there is a good model at Durham, we may want to modify it to suit our own needs.
Well, then, might I suggest that it be, when we get to it, that it be approved in principle, but with the addendum that a report will come back to us as to what it will, what will be involved before the public awareness campaign takes place. Thank you.
Trustee Collard.
Yes, I also am very pleased to see us moving in this direction, but I have a couple of requests regarding the motion itself. I, I think it would be more appropriate to change the wording around CAC, that you will be requesting their involvement through the process and their participation, not their support of the initiative, because the initiative itself has not been fully defined in this report. And so to request their support for something that hasn't been fully defined is kind of nebulous. I would also request that instead of having the motion to support a public awareness campaign, it should be a motion to support the formation of a committee to move forward with a public awareness campaign, so that it can be fully flushed out, because as it sits right now, it's an idea, and an idea needs to have a plan in order to be enacted. So I would like to see that happen in, in those stages.
Trustee Gray.
Thank you, through the Vice Chair. I too like the whole notion and am listening intently with all of the comments and agreeing to what everyone is saying so far. However, I really want to put this, this pitch in, that we saw a campaign not unlike this happen in recent times, which resulted in the redistribution of money as opposed to the increase in money in the pot. And I think that we, we don't want to take on a campaign that might see similar results occur. I think the clear message, given that we know so many other boards are also facing the same struggle, the clear message has to be that there needs to be more funding, not a analysis where the formula is rejigged so that the same pot is just redistributed in different ways. So I think we want to be really clear on what our intent is on that, so that we are in fact working in cohort with our fellow 71 other boards across the province as opposed to their detriment, okay?
Trustee Gribbins.
I am in support of moving forward with something, and I am willing to be on the committee if that's, if it's formed. I would, I don't have, I like that the, obviously, the use of the hashtag is indicating that technology would be in use. And what I find interesting is that we would be not potentially hopping on the fund the need, because it more than, like, the, the more little minor conversations you have, when you could make one large conversation and one, you know, a big campaign to the province, coming from all over the place. So the only thing is, I looked up fund the need, and it has been used for other things too, I, they didn't really research it so well, but it's, they're older things, so, but, because you don't want, like, fund the need, fix the finances, show me the money, you know, like, all sorts of things coming all over the place, you want to consolidate your message. So, yeah, and I'm all for that, not just Twitter, you know, let's, let's get a Facebook page going too, and move forward with that, too.
Trustee Pappen.
Thank you, through the Vice Chair. My concern, I guess, is the sentiments that have been echoed around the table. Without a definite plan of action, how different is this really than what we've tried to do before? So I think, as we've said, we need more details to kind of understand what's moving forward.
The reason I brought it forward, because I thought we needed to actually have this discussion. And so I appreciate all the input, because I, but how it's different from what we've done in the past is we've never really involved the community or the public, or tried to really make them aware of what the concerns are, so.
Trustee Harvey Hope.
Well, finance and accountability, I'm fully supporting this motion in its revised format. I would like to suggest that there's an awful lot of people out there who still think their property taxes come directly to the board, as far as paying, you know, for the majority of education, and it doesn't. It comes out of general finances. As one who has, I mean, we still get the property tax revenue, but most of it comes from general, general revenue now. Also, I think that we need to perhaps go at it from a few different areas. One might be to ask the Ministry of Education what they think it costs to educate a child, because as trustee Collard brought up at a budget workshop, it was, you know, what does it cost to have a child sit in a seat and, and be taught the Ontario curriculum? And then the additional question, as we call it, incremental cost of a child with additional needs. And I, the problem has been coming that the, the cost of providing the additional needs that everybody agrees needs to be provided, and we all want to do that, is, is starting to have a major effect on providing, meeting the basic curriculum budget. So we want to do it all, and at some point, you end up with going back to the funder. So I think it's a question of, yes, we need a public awareness campaign, but we also need to ask a little bit more for, explain the funding formula, and make sure that our budget and our financial statements are set up in such a way that perhaps we can find, help that dialogue with the public.
Thank you.
Trustee Collard.
Thanks. I'm, I'm actually thinking now that perhaps we ought to refer this to the Finance and Accountability Committee, so that it can be put on an agenda quickly, and we can get moving on this, and, and start, maybe perhaps a subcommittee needs to be formed, and, and we can move on it more quickly. I don't know if that's something we would want to do tonight, I don't know if that's something you want to wait till it comes to the next meeting, but I don't think it's as productive for the conversations to be putting together what the plan should be at the board table. I think that's committee work, and, and perhaps that could be a direction we could go in.
Director Miller.
Through you Vice Chair Graves, trustees, I'm a little wary of it going to committee, because we have staff that sit at the committee. I mean, we're sitting here, this is a trustee initiative, and obviously, staff cannot be involved in, in preparing any kind of campaign or anything like that. And I, I haven't thought it completely through, but I, I know that we have people sit at that committee, staff, and it may look as though staff is... I think we just, well, I, I think it just requires some thinking about it first, I guess.
Follow.
I'm aware that when Peel had their campaign, they involved considerable number of staff.
Not that I, I'm not against the idea, if you want to punt it to the Finance and Accountability Committee, that's fine, but as far as the Director Miller's comments, the standing committees, whichever, the committee of the whole, or wherever we have this committee discussion, the members are trustees, so the staff are just resources. So as long as we maintain it at a trustee-level set of committees, it would be the same, as if we'd set up an ad hoc committee right off the board, so it would still be trustee-led, and they would just be resources. So I think we're protecting their status at that point. And, and it is my intention, although this looks like the timing is, is going to push it about when, exactly the same time as I was going to start working on the agendas for the fall Finance and Accountability Meeting, where I was basically saying, okay, where's the bud, the past budget, and let's start looking at it right again. So I think it'll, it'll mesh quite well with the idea, which was to look at each area of the budget, and if we start with the special education area, then that's great, that's where we start, and it will tie in really well, and we'll be able to do the, the legwork to then pass it on to whoever's going to do the communications piece, which is not my strong suit.
I'd like to thank everybody for your feedback. That's what I was hoping for tonight, actually, because I think we all need to be involved in this dialogue, but I wanted to bring it to the table, because I thought we needed something that was a starting point. I will bring back an amendment for the next meeting. My concern about referring it is we won't be able to deal with it until probably September, October, because with the Committee of the Whole meetings, everything is booked up until the end of June. So if we want to delay that long, I mean, that's a decision we have to make at the board. Otherwise, I will try and bring an amendment back for the next board meeting, and we can decide as a board what we're going to go from there.
Trustee Collard.
We haven't had a gender review yet for the June Committee of the Whole meetings, and I think we could slate this in for June if we so wished, because we have not had a gender review for those meetings.
We haven't had a gender review. We have one more meeting that is open for, for agenda considerations, and my plan was to, at the next Committee of the Whole, have a summary discussion at the end, to just, rather than having a separate meeting to, to discuss those. So seeing no further speakers, so I will pass the gavel back.
I'd like to thank everybody again for all your input. The next item is the Special Education Plan. Superintendent Zonoffeld, report 16084 on page 17 of your board package. Superintendent Zonoffeld. So we have ants.
Jean was almost attacked by a few weeks ago.
Ants? Ants? You're not an ant or an uncle that I know of, but go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. Before you, you have the report reporting regarding the Special Education Plan. This comes before you each year, and our process, which we followed for many years, has been to take the current plan and make updates, amendments, changes, so that we ensure that the plan reflects the programs and services available to our students, and that we make it as user-friendly as possible. And this is a, a plan that's accessed quite often by both families and by staff. And along, along the way in our process, we have a lot of support and involvement from CAC, and this, this year, we chose to do a more extensive review of the plan. We started doing that in our CAC meetings and determined that that would be more efficiently done in a, in a smaller group. So we did, put together a, sort of a subcommittee, if you will, of staff and CAC members, as well as a trustee, and engaged in quite a lengthy review through that process, and then brought it back to our CAC committee for more review there. So you see that in front of you, the, the report in that regard. I apologize if there wasn't a link. I did send it to you in the, in the, in the, during the break, I sent you a link, and you're telling me it's not the right link? Then I'll send you the right link. So, that's a, one of the things that we've changed is my understanding with our current website, is that old documents will be removed, because they, they aren't, they keep on living there. If you search for them, you can't find them. So if I've sent you the wrong link, I apologize, I thought I'd sent you the right one. But it is the, it should be this, the link should be for the 15, 16 plan, this year's plan. Oh, it is the right, okay. Well, then, that's what you, that's, this is what has been brought to trustees for, when I asked Superintendent, I, this is what was our process last year, and it has been for many years beforehand, because what comes to you is the current plan with a summary of the changes that will be made. So that's what's, that's what's before you, and that's what's come before you in the past. So you see the summary there. We actually have four pages of changes that we've made, all itemized within each standard. And so we've, that's what we've pulled together, but in this report, I didn't bring you four pages of changes, just a, a summary of those. And that's been our past practice as well. And you can see in my report, sorry, in the report, that CAC has held an online vote, and through that vote, determined not to support the plan this year. And in my conversations with the chair, I wanted to, I wanted to ensure that I was appropriate in saying that most of the, those who voted not to support the plan did so because of the proposed budget changes. So those not in support, it wasn't because of the content of this document, of the, of the plan. Like I said, we've worked through this quite extensively as, as staff and CAC. The vote was because of the proposed budget changes. I think I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your report. You do have a list of questions.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I have a couple of points. As I mentioned to you prior, the decision to remove the ELDCs and add more communication classes was brought to trustees as an information item two weeks ago, and it's not reflected in your changes to the Spec Ed plan here. And it is a, a rather substantial change, because it, the, the group of students that was served by the ELDC will not be served by the communication classes. They're two separate things, and so I wanted to make sure that they would be reflected in the report. And my second question is more budgetary, so I'll, I'll go back on the list if I need to. Okay.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Collard. And as you and I discussed, I will, so between now and when the, when the, this comes back for approval, next board meeting, I'll add that within the summary as well, that mentioning of the... that within the summary as well, that mentioning of the change in the ELDCs and communication classes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. Thank you. So when I... I understand the theory of this. You send the... You approve a plan somewhere June, July of one year, and it becomes the plan with the date of 1516 for like it would have been last year. In June or July, we would have passed the Special Education Plan. It would have been stamped as the 1516 Plan. And then come September, you start updating based on the appendix changes in that report, and then it comes and it becomes the 1617. What... The link that you gave us is to the 1516 Education Plan with a schedule of amendments that changed the 1516 Plan. So I still haven't seen the schedule of amendments to the 1617 Plan, and the motion says to accept the Special Education Plan 1617 as amended. So I'm trying to have clarification of what it is the motion's actually accepting. Is it the 1516 Plan with an appendix of changes that will be implemented later? Or is it the 1516 Plan that's already been amended up to a certain point, but still has some budget changes possibly going to be reflected later?
So this motion is your second descriptor. It's the current plan, 1516, with this summary of changes. If you can appreciate that there are changes that are grammatical, housekeeping nature, formatting, those kinds of things. So that's why the summary here is of the main content-type changes. So that's to show you what those are, and for you to know that the current plan with these main types of changes are what will formulate the 1617 Plan. There is nothing in here at this point regarding anything that might change as a result of the budget. That would make... That would be a presumption on our behalf, that those things are going to happen. So the plan is coming to you as it is. And once again, this has been the format, the process, for several years now. So it comes to you in its most... And what it will look like in its most revised form. If something were to change in terms of programs and services for students with special needs through the budget, we would then do another revision to reflect those changes, to ensure that the plan, the 1617 Plan, is as current as possible, because the intent is that this acts as a resource for families and staff, so it needs to be as current as possible. So this is the most... This will be the most current form, and if there's a need for more change, we will. And if you could... Sorry, outside, if you can appreciate that there's quite a bit of work that goes into it from a clerical standpoint, from all the changes that are made, and that's why you don't see a final polished document here. You see the current plan with a summary of changes.
Follow up. Yeah. Okay. Well... I would... The way it's presented, it may have been that way in the past. That's fine. That's history. But what I don't understand is why we aren't getting... I understand why you wouldn't take the changes that you don't know that are for sure yet because of the budget, and wouldn't weave them into the current plan. I understand why we're taking a 1516, but we're being asked to approve changes without a list of changes. And so if you actually... I guess I want the four pages instead of the summary is really what I'm asking for. The standard 12 says, "Known to the department at the time of the review." There's no date, so I don't know what time, when that review was. And you're going to send a report to the ministry, and I don't actually know what you're going to send, because I actually don't understand what this thing's going to look like at the end. I can understand from the 1516 link that you've given us that what was changed in last year is because there's a list of the things that changed, I guess, from 1415 to 1516. And I would have thought there'd be a list like that, ready to be incorporated, if we say yes. I actually don't know when I'm approving, so I will not approve it at this point, because I don't know what is I'm saying. If I am... As amended, I don't know the amendments. So, you know, it'd be like... And I understand that there's ones that you want to put in, so you've got... You spent the year from September until now with the agreement of CAC saying this needs to be changed, all these housekeeping changes and everything else. So you have a draft... Trustee Harvey Hope, you've passed your three minutes. Could you wrap up, please, quickly? So I'm suggesting that you have a draft that you know is agreed upon, and then there's another piece that's the budget that you don't want to weave through yet. So I would request that we have the draft as it sits at the moment, with it saying "Draft 1617," and an appendix of... And this is what's going to happen if we pass the budget, with, you know, another set of housekeeping, I'm sure, because you won't catch everything, but at least the main bits of it, so that it's very clear what it will look like. And then... Trustee Harvey Hope. I'll put my name on the... Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, through the Chair. I'd also like to start by asking that in the recommendation, it reflects the standards. It says that it resolved the Halt District School Board accept the Spec Ed Plan. The standards ask that the Board of Trustees approve it, and if you would please amend that standard. I'm leery about approving a plan that doesn't always reflect what could happen in the budget. I feel much more comfortable approving a plan with budget amendments, rather than one with before-budget decisions. I think it gives us the wrong impression to the people we represent, that if we pass this plan, that everything in it will be there for the fall. So I'm looking for further clarity, and I hope that we can see that before our budgetary meeting.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. And actually, my comments are going to be quite along those lines. So I'll just do it from my understanding, because this was going to be my comment anyway. The motion that we've been discussing the past few weeks is that the plan come to the Board before we pass the budget. I was trying to look it up here. I couldn't look it up quickly enough, but I'm quite certain it doesn't say we have to pass the plan before we pass the budget. So I just wanted to put it out there that I'm likely next week to ask that the decision to approve the plan be deferred until a later date. So that's where I'm at, because I do think it's important. I would like to see a more definitive version of what we're going to approve. And maybe my question to, through your Chair, to Superintendent Zonoffeld would be, in terms of staff time, because I know it's getting tight on the end of the year, but what sort of format could be presented to us, say, in four weeks from now?
Superintendent Zonoffeld.
Through the Chair, to Trustee Graves, and all three of the questions. We do have a... It's a fairly close version. Once again, it's not polished, and it's not sort of print-ready, as you might, you know, we would want to see that final version. We do have one that's in pretty close to that form, including all those specific summary of changes that I can share with trustees tomorrow, so I can certainly send that out if that pleases the Board.
That would be great. Thank you. I'm seeing a lot of nods around the table. I think that'd be really helpful.
Maybe I'll add that. I'll have to... I'll see if it's... There are a few, in some places, where it might make reference to one-page number, where it's not quite right, because of, you know, things get pushed around, all that kind of thing. May not be exact, but I've asked staff not to work on that specifically, because as more, you know, as final tuning gets happening, it's just work they have to do over and over again, right? So...
Thank you. Trustee Ellen Harrison.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. In addition to the process-related questions asked by my colleagues, I have a couple of content questions with respect to the report. The first one is standard five, and reflects that a parent must request a review of an IPRC decision by submitting this request in writing within 15 calendar days. So my question on that one is, with respect to accessibility and equity, I'm wondering whether that's ever presented a barrier for families to submit a request in writing, because we do have a number of families that English is not a first language, for example, and so I wonder what's behind that, or what can be behind that, to make sure that that's a fair process for everyone? That's question one. Question two is standard six, the next one that has the timelines. Psych assessments, eight months to a year, speech-language assessments, approximately three months. And my question about those is, is that... It says align with our practice, and I guess that's my question. Does that mean that's really what's happening, or does that mean that's aspirational in what we want to be happening, or that's what's happening? Okay. Great.
Go ahead.
Through the Chair, to Trustee Ellen Harrison. I'll just start by pointing out that all of these standards are required by the ministry. There's a guide that articulates what the plan has to look like, the elements that have to be included. So since standard five, there has to be, you know, clarity for parents around how to do things through the IPRC process, including things like a request for a review. So the change there was around the calendar piece. So just to clarify that, as opposed to school days, because depending on the parts of legislation, those are different. And to my knowledge, I haven't come across that as... You have asked a great question around language and submitting this in writing. We have quite a few supports in schools for families that require, you know, support around that language piece. So first, I think that in most cases, that's very much supported through the relationships that schools have with families, where schools are attuned with families that need more support in that way or not. You know, the conversations that I know that go on helps schools be aware of barriers that families may face in terms of their own literacy, first language, second language, et cetera. We also have cultural support in terms of cultural brokers that we bring into schools to support families and understanding our school system, you know, our newcomer families. And we also provide interpreter services as well, interpretive services. So families that need that from a written standpoint, or from a verbal interaction standpoint, schools regularly bring in those services also. So, you know, the support is there. I haven't heard a concern or a complaint about that, so I'm fairly confident that families are being supported in that way. Respect to standard six. The standard requires us to state our wait times. So this isn't aspirational. This is... We have to say what our actual wait times are. So that's what that is.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you, through the Chair. Two quick questions. I wonder if you could clarify, because I'm not understanding this, the timing and how you leverage this plan that might then have impact on staff and personnel, because we are late in the game in terms of the positioning of staff for September of next year. And I'm noticing under standard 12 regarding special education staff, that there are some changes and so on, and that if this plan isn't approved, then how does that leverage in the timing of staff and changes? And speaking of staff and changes, earlier, we spoke about changes to the Learning Center and its availability for next year. Could you perhaps share a little bit about the plan in place to accommodate those students that might have been attending the Learning Center for next year?
Through the Chair, to Trustee Gray. So in terms of the changes that are noted for staff, for standard 12, those are actually... In terms of the updates, some of those are title changes that happened from last year. The Assistive Technology Lead actually happened... I'm trying to think if it even happened in July, because of ministry funding. So some of these just came late in terms of the... Right. So they just came late. And then the... And then some of the itinerant teacher rules, it's a reflection of when we moved from a specialist model to a generalist model, and that happened, I want to say, three or four years ago at least. So really, it's... Once again, those changes you see are updating of titles, language, et cetera. So with regards to the Learning Center...
Director Miller...
Oh, sorry. I just, before you go on to the Learning Center, I just threw you, Chair Amos, to Trustee Gray. You've identified a real... It is a big challenge for us, because there's not true alignment between collective agreements and critical paths, budget process, and when it's released from the ministry, and when Spec Ed plan comes forward. So hence, it does pose challenges virtually every year in making determinations if something is going to change on what we do. And so hence, there are occasions where teachers will get a surplus letter, because we anticipate that that might go, or a program might go, or something along those lines. So you've identified... It is a real conundrum at times, and I don't know if Executive Officer McFadden wants to say anything, but that's part of the issue for us, is we get the GSNs the end of March. Most of our collective agreements, say, letters and so on, have to be March, what is it? March 31st. So it's in around the same time, and to be human about it, we get it out there, and then the budget comes forward later. So I just wanted to comment on that. I don't know... Do you have anything you want to add to?
Go ahead.
Sure. And maybe I'll add, on the other end, too, is that when the budget does get approved, if we're adding positions, that can be a challenge in terms of if certain windows of opportunity and collective agreements have closed, then we end up going to outside or to, you know, to new hires, all kinds of things within our group. So, yeah, it can certainly be a challenge. With regards to the potential change in the Learning Center program, so we... Specifically, we did provide notice of surplus to those teachers to create that opportunity. If... So if that change goes ahead, those teachers, you know, we've met the parameters of the collective agreement, and, you know, and those teachers had the option then of deciding, do I want to wait and see, or do I want to go and apply for other positions? And actually, I know many of them have, and have been quite... You know, have been successful in becoming a communication class teacher, or they've become a surgeon in a school, or those kinds of things. You know, they're teaching a self-contained class, whichever. So they've made... And then they would have, if the Learning Centers were to continue, then they would be offered a right of recall, where they could come back to that position. If they choose not to, then we would be hiring new staff to those positions. So I thought we've done our due diligence, I believe, in that we've created the opportunity for that to happen, where staff can make... Or sorry, where trustees can make that choice, right, for the centers to continue or not. So maybe I'll comment a little bit further on the Learning Centers, if that's okay. So prepared a few comments. A little bit historical to start, that the Learning Center first opened about 25 years ago, and maybe I'll say that many aspects of teaching and learning have changed in that time. The Learning Center has evolved somewhat in that way, but there's been many changes in the classroom, and I know you all appreciate that, that classrooms are different places, and teaching has certainly, you know, evolved and grown in many ways. This six-week program is very specifically an extension of the classroom program. It's not a replacement or an alternative placement. It's an extension for students in grade four. from grade four to six. It's a real focus on learning strategies, skills and self-advocacy. So I asked staff to look over a few months of applications and look at the referrals, the type of reasons that you see on those. So here's some of the referral rationale, support for assistive technology skills, learning strategies to use when reading, writing and math, awareness of learning styles, self-advocacy, attention and focus, organization skills, anxiety and stress skills, management skills. I hope you're hearing student needs that we address regularly in a regular classroom. There are four learning centers across the board. They have two teachers working with up to two students or up to 10 students at a time. So you have a one to five ratio. So just point out that's, I believe, our most richly resourced program that we have. We serve about 160 students a year. We have space for about 200, but about 160 participate. And there's been a bit of a decline. We looked over the past three years and there's been a slight drop each year. I couldn't say all the reasons for that, but I think it's partly due to the fact that we meet those needs that you hear, I think, quite well in a regular class. Also, we know for a fact, we hear from families that they don't want their child transitioning out and back for that six-week period. Because those transitions can be difficult for students, so they'd like them to stay in their home schools and have their needs met there. Of those 160 or so students, about half of them have identified learning disabilities. And of the other half, the other 80, there's a range of needs, whether they be attention deficit or anxiety, et cetera. And you may want to note as well that currently we have over 1,500, 1,533 students who are identified with a learning disability. So that means we have 1,450 students with other, who have learning disabilities that don't go to the learning center. So I'm pointing that out so that you're aware that we have students with a range of needs that we meet in many other ways, lots of supports going on in classrooms. So what does that look like? I know that's the question on the minds of many is if a student doesn't go to the learning center, what does support look like? So once again, thinking back to how the classroom has changed from 25 years ago. So universal design for instruction. 25 years ago, and I don't mean to paint all classrooms with the same brush, we had much more of an approach 25 years ago of here's the curriculum and our focus, our intent as teachers is to cover that curriculum with, before the end of the year and try and help all students move through that. Now we're much more focused on meeting the needs of students from where they are currently and moving them forward. And that type of design really focuses on meeting the needs of all students as opposed to fit my classroom program. Now it's much more individualized and tailored to the needs of each student. And that happens through large groups, small group, individual, a number of staff supporting students within that classroom. Assistive technology uses is widespread, technology is widespread in all of our schools, but assistive tech for sure. We have, I believe at last count, about 7,500 assistive tech devices in our schools. So that's, we're approaching one for almost every identified student. It's a large number of devices that really support students in their learning. And there's lots of growth in skills of both students and staff and their ability to support students. We offer training camps for students with assistive tech to help grow those skills, both in the summer and during March break. We have a lot of focus on learning style. If you walk into any class at various points of the year, there's a real focus on students understanding their learning styles. Am I, you know, an audio learner, visual learner? Do I need my work chunked more? Do I benefit from group interaction? All those kinds of things are a key in a lot of our, in our classes. So much more of a focus on that. We're far more focused on students and their mental health. We offer programs like Kids Have Stress Too where we try to help students identify their, you know, where, what sort of, has their engine running? How does that, how does that work for them in that class? And so that awareness of their stress levels and how to manage that is a big focus in our classes. Software like Lexia that supports kids in their learning is purchased across the schools. We do lots of other small group work. And our growth of our level literacy intervention program, LLI, if you're familiar with that, we put a lot of resource and time into that in our system, and that's a great learning resource for our students as well. And finally, for some of our students, there's, continues to be the option of a self-contained class, whether that be for LD or behavior or whatever that might look like, but there's lots of options there. So I hope you're hearing that there's a wealth of support in the regular class for our students and some options elsewhere. And that's how we support most of our students. So, and then the last piece I'll mention, I'm not going to go into too much detail here, is the breadth of professional development we offer for staff. I was, I asked staff, and I'll send this to you later on tonight, to articulate all the learning opportunities that are out there for staff so that they can meet the needs of all students in our classrooms. And as they started to list them, it was just going on and on, I said, well, we have to break this up somehow so we don't have this massive list. So they've broken it into fall, winter, spring, so you can see the breadth across the year. And then some of the ideas we have for a new design for next year, depending, you know, that in the budget is a proposal around some additional professional development funds. So some other things that we would like to be able to offer staff are included there as well. But this is built into many, many aspects of our staff development, and most of those currently exist. So I want you to understand that that support for staff learning has been there and continues to be there, and that's why we're able to support all of those other students that don't go to the learning center. That's why we're able to support them so well in the regular class because of the professional development that's ongoing for our staff. So I think I'll stop there and certainly take any questions.
Okay. So we're now up to trustee events. Did you have a follow-up? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for that detailed list, and I've taken down the notes, but I'll be happy to receive your summary of this information later. Through all of this, we can then be assured that our legal responsibility in providing appropriate and exhaustive services with regards to students with special needs, that would be met from a legal perspective in terms of what's required under the Education Act and so on?
I believe Director Miller would like to address this.
Yeah, I just want to mention, it's been, it's been mentioned that there was a situation in British Columbia, and it was mentioned in the public domain around a human rights challenge that the Board of Education in British Columbia lost as a result of not accommodating the needs of a student. And it's been suggested that it's, the situation with the learning centers is analogous to that situation in British Columbia. Naturally, trustees would be nervous around that, as would staff. So we sought a legal opinion around that, and the legal opinion would be contrary to that, that would say that the learning centers or the moving of the work of the learning centers into the schools is entirely defensible and that it is not analogous at all to the human rights situation in British Columbia. So.
Thank you. Now trustee Evans.
Thank you very much for that information. I can just imagine 25 years ago or in that time, you know, if you needed assistive technology, it would be very hard to be the sole student pulling out that device to be able to, you know, do your work. And so I can see how that advocacy, you know, learning to advocate for yourself, to be able to actually do that would be of utmost importance, but these days, devices are ubiquitous. And so that stress of pulling one out and actually working on it should be much reduced and can be potentially accommodated with special education resource teachers helping out. Now I have a question about though, the training that students do receive when they do get assistive technology. Now you mentioned that there's March break camps and summer camps. I'm worried these, what happens when students receive their technology at a time that's inconvenient for those things, you know? Thank you.
Through the chair to trustee Evans. So the starting point for that support is the CERT. They have had a lot of training in assistive tech and it's ongoing. Our assistive technology lead, mentioned in the report, provides additional training through the CERT networking, but also through other workshops and opportunities during the school year, goes out to schools to work with CERTs also. And, but that's not, that's the starting point because we don't want the CERT to be the only source of knowledge and expertise. If we do, then we're, becomes quite contained and not in the classroom. So then the CERT plays a key role in building the capacity of the classroom teacher. So their ability to mentor, to coach, to work alongside the teacher and demonstrate and model, help them grow their knowledge of the technology and the programs is key. So that's where, in all of these, all of these needs, we want them to be met in the classroom. And when it becomes to students with special needs, the CERT plays a key role in that. Plus, classroom teachers have the ability to also attend any of those training opportunities as well. And we do get lots of regular class teachers going to those.
Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Through the chair to Superintendent Zonoffelt. My question was also around the learning centers and how they would accommodate students. So I appreciate your explanation on that, and I look forward to your follow-up email for answering questions. I do have a question about standard 15 and the recent update. If you could just speak to that.
Oh, the charts, sure. Through the chair to trustee Pappen. So in the current plan with the correct link which I've sent you, just to clarify that, the chart I believe is dated 2012/13, I think. And so we, at the time of this report, we're waiting still to hear from our accessibility committee whether or not this chart has been updated. So we're just trying to make sure that the most current chart goes in the plan. You'll notice that there are some schools that aren't even on the list because of the date of that. So it's not that we're going to update that chart because it's not our chart to update. It's the accessibility committees and if it's, so we've, that's, if it's about to be updated, then we will wait and put in the most current. If it's not, then this will be the chart that goes in.
Thank you. Trustee Coller.
Thank you. I would be very much interested in finding some way to have a overlap year where we still provide learning centers while we continue to provide professional development and build capacity in our classroom teachers. And I know that we don't have room in the budget to do that. So I'm wondering if we have thought about what our projected surplus for this year might be, because it seems that year after year, we do have a surplus. And if there was a projected surplus, those funds could be directed toward phasing out and phasing in and perhaps providing a little bit more relief to concerned families for the one-year period.
Superintendent Veerman.
Through the chair. At the last budget workshop, the question was asked in terms of how much room we had for ministry compliance. And at that time, we did provide some details to the trustees. So we're within, it was about $250,000 to $300,000 within the compliance. So bringing the, or reducing, bringing more money into the budget from the surplus would put us over the ministry compliance definition. I think again, the amount was between $250,000 and $300,000. And I believe the learning center allocation that was in the recommendations was about $850,000, including transportation.
Well, go ahead.
So does surplus then go into contingency automatically? I wasn't aware of that.
So the surplus, the 1516 year-end surplus would go into the accumulated surplus at the end of the year. And as we're working on the 1617 budget, what we're doing is we're taking the accumulated surplus from 1516 or part of the accumulated surplus from 1516 into 1617. So whatever is included as a year-end surplus, again, goes into accumulated surplus, and it's that amount that we're transferring back in, which is the amount that has the limit that was previously discussed.
Okay, thank you. I understand that better now.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. So I've been just going through the spec ed plan very quickly. I've read it before, but was trying to find examples of what kinds of things we're going to change. And so, you know, I found six pages that probably got changed, but one of the things I noted was on page 58, it talks about think tank consultation support model for kids in grades seven and eight that aren't eligible for the learning center and also for other children. And I'm wondering whether what we're really talking about is using the think tank model for everybody. I mean, is that really what we're talking about? Because the first model was the in-center model, and then the other people or students are supported by that. And I liked your explanation of how the changes in the learning center and perhaps for those of the public and also trustees who prefer their information in writing, perhaps somehow we could capture that because that one page or even a summary of what you said verbally would be very useful. And I think if we'd had that either at the budget workshops or in this plan or like a blurb on each thing that's going to change, it would be a lot easier to take it in because what we're, the budget changes are very specific. Their staff or the center or whatever. The housekeeping of the plan and how that changes a little or whether the name of the person's right is not the issue with me. It's understanding how it actually changes because a parent looking at the plan in August, knowing, okay, what are supports are available for my child in the fall, who the person is in the job isn't as important as whether or not there is a primary language class or if there really is a communication, like those pieces. Standard nine in the index is called special education placements provided by the board. And I respectfully submit it should probably be placements and programs because half of what's in that standard nine talks about, after it goes through the placements, it also goes through the programs. And so I had a hard time finding it because I was looking for something that said, here's where the programs are, and I knew it wasn't a placement. So, you know, those kinds of things. So even if we just said the budget, again, the plan is this in draft with big drafts over it, and this is the list of potential changes. And yes, it's going to go up and down and looking at it, you know, yes, you've got very specific staff numbers and you've got very specific names in the people, but just understanding that this paragraph's going to change and whatever. And being a tax accountant, when we get the notice of ways and means from the budget, you know, we get italicized. you know, we get italicized and crossed out, and you can actually see what's going to happen. And so in the big budget areas where you're going to change something, I don't think it's unreasonable that you wouldn't say, page 57 is going to change. We're going to cross out these three paragraphs, and this is what it's going to be instead. And and perhaps in the fall, when you start thinking about how you're going to do it next year, when you start thinking about something, refer back to the spec ed plan and say, okay, what we're actually doing is changing this page, and what does that mean? And yes, there's going to be cross-references that people are going to miss, and that's fine. But just the actual description, if you're actually taking out a whole program, you know you're taking out the whole program. And then that would be something you could just reference where it is in the in the page. Thanks.
Superintendent Zoniffeld?
Like I said, I have this, this, you know, almost complete draft ready for you. If you'd like that immediately, I can send that to you. And then if you want me to follow with where these changes might occur, because really, there are three main changes that are proposed through the budget. One is the discontinuation of the learning centers. Two is a reduction in the number of itinerant resource teachers. And three are the discontinuing the IRTs, the special education IRTs. There are five of those that work in 15 schools. So if you want me to articulate those changes in the plan, where they're reflected, I can certainly do that as a follow-up.
Thank you. Well, you'll have to put yourself on the list again because you used your time up. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Just a question, and I don't know whether this is a budget question or, but it needs to be directed to you, so I'll ask it here. Pursuant to what trustee Collard said, is it possible to, I know we've talked about, I don't, I think we need maybe a little bit more discussion about what the discontinuation of the itinerant resource teachers is going to look like. I think we all maybe now understand the learning center. But is it possible that one would have an itinerant resource teacher for next year as a temporary measure, perhaps not keeping the learning centers open, but having a personnel, just one person, whose job it would be to ensure that the 160 that would have gone through the learning center are actually, actually getting what they need? And that there is a person who on top of, you know, it would be their workload to ensure that the supports are there, so that we don't have anybody slipping through the cracks or that the person, you know, because you're basically adding to a workload that the the staff already knew they had for the fall, and all of a sudden, they have, you know, people who might have been going now aren't, and those kinds of things, and trying to get their training between now and whenever they might have otherwise had this child had the support. So is that a possibility? Because then that would be one salary instead of, you know, then maybe we might be able to fit that in.
Through the chair. So that was one of the changes that we made in the revised through the budget workshops when superintendent Veerman brought some of those changes. If you if you may recall that, our original reduction was 8.5 IRT reduction, and then we came back and with only 4.5. So we added the four back in to increase from one up to two, the number that works in each area, each of the four areas that we identify within our department. So that was, some of the rationale was to support that transition. And I just want to correct myself. I misspoke earlier when I said the the elimination of five IRTs and mine, five LRTs, the learning resource teachers. So my apologies.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers on the list, this will come back in two weeks. Thank you very much, Superintendent Zoniffeld, for your report and your explanation on some of the areas that there was concern about. Director Miller?
It's, thank you, Chair Amos and all trustees. I was going to do this in director's report, but it seems appropriate to speak about it now since we just talked about the spec ed plan. At CAC, and it was a notice of motion around doing a, bringing an external body in to do a review, an entire review of our spec ed programs and our processes. We've, I mentioned it last week at committee, but I also, we've talked about it at admin council. We, we think that that's a good idea, that particularly in light of the challenges we are facing now in special education funding. And I know the trustees have been wrestling, as has CAC, as have staff, have been wrestling greatly with the challenging budget that we've had this year around the reductions in spec ed funding to the board. We anticipate that that will be exacerbated next year, as there may be more money cut from our budget. So it would seem appropriate that we do some kind of review. And it would seem appropriate to bring in an outside group to do that as, given the cuts, we don't want to have our staff devoted to doing a review. We'd prefer that they be working with the kids and the programs they regularly in. So we will bring a report to the board where we'll look at this in a much more serious way and figure out what the parameters were and, you know, get that out there kind of thing. So, okay?
Thank you. So we're now up to our information items. Pardon? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through the chair. May I suggest, it's great news, that the special education topic was on the list of things that the internal audit area was going to look at. We had a very, very draft scoping document. And perhaps that may be an area that one could piggyback on, in that you're going to need specialized people anyway. And it was, it's already on in the hopper, and some of it's going to have to be. So that whatever the documentation that you do for that will lead directly in, and therefore, perhaps we might be able to use some expertise on that area.
Through Chair Amos to trustee Harvey Hope. Yeah, for benefit of all trustees, there will be an audit of our special ed programs from the regional internal auditor. I'm, with superintendent Veerman and I will have to talk about the crossover. I'm not sure of the separation that has to happen with those. And that's one of the things that we'll have to talk about. There may be a very clearly defined separation between those processes. And so I don't know. Superintendent Veerman, do you have anything to?
Through the chair, I think as we develop a scope or further, have further discussion on the mandate of the review, that will be an opportunity to see if there's a link with the regional internal audit team.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you, Superintendent. See what you've started? Director Miller. I know that CAC will support the board, the board's commitment to doing this review. The entire CAC voted unanimously in favor of the review. And so I am very thankful that you've come forward and suggested that this review be done and that it's coming from staff that it needs to be done. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're now up to our information items. And the first one is the 2016 bell time changes report. Superintendent Veerman, report 16091 on page 22 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Veerman.
Thank you. Through the chair, this is a report that's presented on an annual basis and summarizes the requests that we have received for specific bell time changes. Admin council has reviewed the recommendation or the report provided by Karen LaQua at HSTS. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for superintendent Veerman tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I like seeing that Lester B. Pearson's proposed hours are later. That's a good one for the secondary system. I presume that means they've gone to one lunch, because it doesn't compute otherwise. And and perhaps that might actually be mentioned in the explanation in the future. Because I think if you start an hour later and 15 minutes later, that means you've taken 45 minutes out, which sounds to me like, anyway. But my question was, it says HSTS received requests from two schools that could not be accommodated, but it doesn't give any details. And for those of us in accommodation, and sometimes we talk about it in program and accommodation, if there is a specific trend to the requests, it's useful to know, and I wondered if we could get the information. No, it doesn't ask for what the changes were. It just says they asked for changes and they couldn't be accommodated for these reasons. It doesn't say here what they asked for. So, and then my second question is, how many schools do we have that still are doing a 40 and a 50 lunch instead of a 40 and a 40? Because this is my standard annual, how come they get to just decide? I know it makes better sense for contractual reasons to have two 40s. But in a lot of cases, principals are asking for the 10 minutes to be taken out. And in some cases, they can't. And I'm wondering whether sometimes the solution isn't paying somebody for the 15 minutes instead of messing up all the buses, just to have 10 minutes of supervised time at the end of the day instead of changing when the bus arrives.
Director Miller?
Through Chair Amos to trustee Harvey Hope, it's about half and half. As to your second part of the question, I, I guess, I don't know. I don't know the answer. I'm looking around. I don't know if, superintendent Zoniffeld may have an answer.
Yeah, through the chair, I think the challenge would be, already schools struggle to hire student supervisors for an hour, right? So to now try and find them at the end of the day for that period of time would be even more challenging. Plus, many of them are parents. So if their kids are heading home, and you're asking the parent to be there for supervision, not to say it's not possible, but I think our success in hiring is already limited and would be even more of a struggle.
Follow-up, go ahead.
So in my other annual rant is perhaps the high school could add a little bit more time at the end of the day before the bus arrives, so that children actually have time to get from the outreaches of where their last class was to where their locker is, which is usually where the first class is, and then still get to the bus. So those children do not need supervision. So just to keep that in mind, when we look at bus times and cert times, perhaps those could be a little later.
Through Chair Amos to trustee Harvey Hope, some of our secondary schools' bus students do have supervision. They're not all unsupervised. There is supervision for some of them. I understand your question, but I just didn't want it, no, but we do have supervision at many of our schools for secondary schools. Georgetown, for example, has supervision at the bus stop, or where the bus picks, or they used to, I don't know if they still do, but they used to. And I know White Oaks does, and so on. So I, lots don't, but some do, so.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you very much. Through you, Chair, to superintendent Veerman. Not sure if this question you can answer, but I very much appreciate the detail in the, I hope I'm, I'm in the next report. They're blended together, sorry.
Okay. So any other questions on the bell time report tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope?
Anyway, I think in that that long diatribe, I forgot my question, the question that got lost. Kilbride and Pine Grove, were they, were they asking for something unusual? Or were they just asking for a few minutes here or there?
Through the chair, I don't have the information with me this evening. Most of the requests are fairly, a fairly short time, time difference. But again, I can get that information.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions or comments on the bell time report, thank you very much for your report on this, superintendent Veerman, and don't move. You're up for the home-to-school transportation policy exemptions. Report 16085 on page 26 of your board package. Superintendent Veerman?
Thank you. Through the chair, this is also a report that's presented to the trustees on an annual basis. I would like to make one correction on page 26, and I believe the trustees have already been apprised of this under Burlington-Kilbride, where in the second sentence, it makes reference to Blessington Court. That should actually be Pantan Street. So that change has been revised and updated on the website. Again, it provides quite a bit of detail with respect to some of the exemptions that are in place, mainly as a result of construction that's in process. The maps have been provided to, again, give some additional information, some victorial information with respect to the change. I think what's important to note is that there is, every year, there is ample notice to the community when there is going to be a change back to, to follow the transportation policy. So if there are changes that are going to occur, parents have a full year notice that the change is, is going to be in effect the following year. Again, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. And there's a few. Vice Chair Graves.
Now, just continue my comment. So and so it refers to that, that last piece, the, the notice to parents, which is really great for the parents who, who already exist in those, those homes, and their children are attending the school. Some of the places where I've run into issues is new parents moving in or students transitioning from elementary to high school, and just the communication about these. So my question is, is there a place, aside from the report that we get once a year, is there a place where all of these sort of exceptions are listed on the HTS, HSTS website that I can point to people to if they're moving into an area?
Through the chair, I'll follow up with Mrs. LaQua to see if it is actually posted. But I know when there are new parents in, coming into the community, and if they are being transported as a result of this exemption, that they are notified at the time that transportation's put into place, that this transportation's in place because of the circumstances, and it is reviewed on an annual basis. But again, I'll confirm with Ms. LaQua to see if there's an area on the website that this information can be accessed.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, one of the issues that we run into is when there's an exception, and people are looking to move into an area, when they've looked it up, it says, yes, transportation is, is provided. And then once they actually register, then they're told at that point, but they've already made the decision, say, to move to that area. And I think that's something that may have been addressed already. So if, if this could, could be posted somewhere on the website, so that the parents who might be looking for that information do, do have it ready at their fingertips, even before they move into an area, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to superintendent Veerman. I actually, trustee Graves very eloquently voiced my, my concern with this and the recommendation that I would also suggest. And further to that, it does suggest here that families of affected students had not been previously informed, that they were within an exemption policy parameters. And so I think we need to more actively inform any new families that fit the exemption criteria, and let them know that that's the case, and that that service will be lost to them, as opposed to, you know, they, they step into the school, they receive the transportation, and then receive notice that they will no longer be getting it. Because then it's like we're taking something away, rather than realizing that this is an extra service that is in place to take care of their kids and their safety.
Through the chair, I know that all of the staff at the consortium do try and communicate as much as possible with families, but certainly I'll bring this forward and to share with them the concerns that have been raised to ensure that when there are families that are new, that they're aware, if they have, they are being transported, that it is under an exemption. So I'll communicate that to Karen.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, I have a suggestion and a request for clarification. First, the clarification. It, it indicates under Halton Hills, as it does for other communities as well, that in the case where the exemption is going to be as well, that in the case where the exemption is going to be removed, that the families be given proper and long-term, I guess, notice. And it says April. Is that April of this year or April of the following year?
So, through the chair would be April of this year, so April of '16, that transportation would be removed September of '17, so it's a full year. It's over a year.
Right, over a year. And I, that's great, thank you. So that, in fact, that communication has already happened for these families then, because we're in the month of May now?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Or if not, very shortly.
Okay. And so a suggestion I would have to follow up on trustee Oliver's comments earlier was that I think all students are issued a bus card or a pass or something, that perhaps the passes that come for students in areas that could be exempt in the future, maybe there could be a proviso on that, that this is a special bus put on with the, you know, with the complements of the Halton Student Transportation, but at some future date, it is subject to change, or something like that. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Trustee Danioli.
Thank you. And trustee Graves has already touched on this, because I'm just looking at the ones for my area, for Milton, and wondering if those letters had already gone out in the different cases. Because I know Milton says it went to be sent in April. So, and for Bruce Trail, that there was one that was going to be sent out to advise them that it might be happening. So I'm just wondering if those letters have gone out and I just haven't gotten any calls and everybody's okay with it, or should I be expecting the storm to be hitting at some point? I've been, this is not my first rodeo, we've done this before.
Through the chair, I'll confirm again with Karen's, my understanding that the letters typically go out in the April timeframe, and if there's any change to that, I can let you know.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I've been itching to raise this question for a long while, but there hasn't ever been a report to hook it into, so I'm not sure this is totally the appropriate spot, but you'll let me know, please. My question is with respect to the report that's attached from HTS, HSTS, to the Board of Directors, and under background, it's the first bullet point that says, "Within the region of Halton based on the following criteria." And the first one is distance from home to designated school. And I just wonder how many times in the past it has been discussed or whether...
Trustee L. Harrison, which report are you on? Are you on the next, the next report?
I'm on the next report.
Okay, I just, which, which?
I'm on page 28 of the board agenda, 29 of the board agenda. That's the right one, right? Phew, okay. I thought I was losing it.
Thank you.
No problem. So that criterion is distance from home to designated school. And it seems to me that this one is a particular issue for many families who leave children at grandparents or at a daycare every single day that is, and then they leave for wherever. So they're in a spot every year where they're having to apply for optional or courtesy seating. So, has that... And given that that is like their starting point every day, and it does fulfill the distance criteria and so on, I just wonder if I could be at some point referred to, if those discussions have already taken place, or if not, if it's possible to, because these folks are in a position where they have to wait for a few months every year to hear back and when they should be getting on to work in their day and so on. Thanks.
Did you want to respond to that, superintendent Veerman?
Through the chair, I know this has been a question that's been raised many times in terms of alternate accommodations. Ms. LaQua has spoken to this in the past at previous committee meetings. So what I'll do is I'll ask her to provide an update as to what has been the status over the last year or so with respect to these requests. I know many of them can be accommodated through courtesy, recognizing that sometimes there is a time delay, but I'll seek an update from her on that.
Follow-up?
Everybody knows already, but it's the time delay that's really the issue, I think. You know, asking somebody to put their, basically their work-life on hold for two months seems to be a bit of an odd situation, that I wish there's a best practice to point to or a different practice that we could point to. If there's no financial implications for us, if there's an existing bus stop and room on those buses, I don't understand why. Oh, I'm red. Thank you. The end.
Thank you for being succinct. Trustee Grevens.
Something, a couple things to do with transportation. One is if we have any ability to suggest to the HSTS on their website of where to put this link to the eligibility list, it would be right on the page where they look up the eligibility, because there's, it's a lot of white space there, and you could put a huge notice on there. Second thing is, when we're talking about courtesy seats for people who are transporting children from away from their home, perhaps a fee could be added to accommodate the cost of the staff for their time, because I, what I understand, it takes staff away from their work, their regular work, for umpteen hours and weeks to be able to complete the courtesy seats. And we're working with people's home addresses when we're asking them now to take a look at another address to see if they're going to be able to be eligible. Perhaps there should be a small fee involved, and the amount of people that are, need that kind of accommodation may be able to cover the cost of the staff member.
Through the chair, I know transportation always raises many, many questions. And, you know, certainly, I deal with the consortium on a regular basis. However, the expertise does lie with Karen LaQua. And certainly, if there are these questions and additional questions at a future transportation committee meeting, I could have her attend, ask her to attend, to be able to respond to some of the questions that you're raising. You know, she can give a more fulsome answer than I can with respect to some of the issues that you are bringing up. But certainly, the issue of courtesy is one that comes up all the time, and the reasons for the delay. But certainly, any of these type of questions, she'd be much, in a much better position to answer. So I could certainly ask her to attend a future transportation committee meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Cullen.
Every year, we struggle and wrestle with the courtesy seats, and we have families that wait six to eight weeks to find out whether or not their child is getting a seat on the bus. And really, the only way around it when their starting point is not their home would be for us to make a change to our transportation policy, because the HSTS provides busing according to our policy. So if we wish to have alternate sites other than the home address to be considered by HSTS in determining eligibility, then we need to change our policy.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Just to follow up on some of the things that have been mentioned, the exemptions in the list at the back, some of them are what you might call, consider to be permanent in that, you know, Dundas isn't getting any narrower, the 407 and the Queen Elizabeth aren't going away. So some of them are actually kind of, you know, you're on the exemption list, but you're never actually gonna, unless they put a pedestrian bridge across, and we have lots of notice of that. So, there are some that are temporary, and there are some that are permanent. So I would think that the trustee Gray's suggestion of, you know, you've got a bus pass, but you're in an temporary exemption, you'd want to focus on the temporary exemptions, because there's far too many not temporary exemptions. There are a couple of things on that exemption list, like Palermo has an east of Bronte Road expiring June of 2015, and I would presume it's already expired. So I don't know if that's a type of, or it should be '16, or whether it has already expired and should have been taken off the list. Ethel Gardner is now the name of Gardner Public Schools, so that probably should be passed along. And I was curious about Bronte Street versus Bronte Road. Do you really have one of each up there in Milton? You do? Oh, okay. So you've got Boeing Public School with a Bronte Street and a Bronte Road within its actual catchment area. That's just kind of crazy. But, okay. No wonder people sometimes get lost. And I am curious to know, and I hate to raise this, but I'm going to, St. Vincent, just to pass this along to, through our HSTS directors as well as superintendent Veerman, St. Vincent has an exemption for south of Lake Shore Road. And I would like someone to follow that up and explain to me why it's there. We do not have an exemption for, we don't have an exemption for students in our board that live south of Lake Shore necessarily. We do not. Well, EJ is not on that list, so it's... No, we do not have, in Oakville, St. Vincent's and EJ are around the corner from each other. The students living south of Lake Shore, they go to the public board, don't have an exemption. St. Vincent's does. I would just like someone to explain to me at a further date why that is, because that will be where I've sat at that bus stop and I, for the distance pieces, but I'd like to understand the exemption piece, so, thank you.
Through your chair, Amos, I think trustee Harvey Hope has got a point. We need to look into that, because the students that go to St. Vincent come from an area that also attend EJ James and possibly Maple Grove, so.
Thank you. Trustee Pappan.
Just that we need a motion to extend past 10 o'clock.
Did I hear you make that motion, trustee Pappan? Thank you. Do I have a second, or trustee Gray? I don't know if it's on the voting.
While we're waiting for the motion, can I just suggest that if we do pass to extend, that we try to keep it brief, because it is late for staff?
All those in favor? That passes. Thank you. Sorry, is there any further questions on this topic? Seeing none? Thank, oh, did you just, on the same topic?
I squeaked in there. I'm actually, I'm the active speaker now, if you don't... Go ahead. Sorry about that. Just through your chair, as another request, if, I know because there's more construction, particularly with the gas line that's going through Milton and down through Burlington, if things crop up over the course of the year, since you're going to Karen anyway, if you wouldn't mind asking her when some of these temporary things crop up all of a sudden, if they do, if she can let the trustees know, or via someone at the board to let us know, so that we're better prepared to answer the questions, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I don't believe any more people are squeaking through. So, we will move to superintendent Veerman's next report, which is the Halton Student Transportation Services 2014-2015 Annual Report on page 14 of your package, report number 16092. Superintendent Veerman?
Thank you. The report is attached to the agenda. It does highlight all of the good work that the consortium has done over the past year. And although I know we want to be brief, I do want to acknowledge that there has been very, very good work done by the consortium and the staff.
And I'd like to echo those comments. There's, they have been looking at ways of refining their process and the fact that they got such a good rating last year when the, when they came in and were audited. They're in the top three for the province, so kudos to them. And there are no comments or questions, it looks like, for this report, so thank you very much, superintendent Veerman. So, the next item is the Capitol Update. Superintendent Cullen, report 16086 on page 67 of your board package. Welcome, superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are a few items on the list tonight that I should draw to trustee's attention, because they are underway. The Alton Village addition, very busy activity going on the roof of the existing school to put that second-story addition on. Keelburger, you recall, we had a bit of a start-stop process there for a little while. We think we've now resolved that issue. So in conjunction with relocating the portables, we'll be moving ahead with the addition on Keelburger. And of course, as you know, tonight, you've approved the appointment for Martin Street, so that would be a big step in getting that moving forward. And we are right on the verge of getting the portable lists for next September. So the next time you see this report, it will be severely populated with all of the portable locations and numbers to let you know what's going on in that regard. Happy to take any questions related to the Capitol Update.
Thank you, superintendent Cullen. Are there any comments or questions on his report tonight? It's a recommendation? Okay, I think something, so there are no comments or questions on this topic, but the next item, which is Close the Gap Initiative, superintendent Cullen, is this supposed to be a recommendation or an information item, because it's written as a recommendation?
It is a recommendation that would require board approval, because it is...
So it should have been in a different situation, so trustees will just have to imagine it was up in the action items for June 1st, and it's a little out of order. Okay, go ahead, superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This really relates to actually the approval from the board to move funds from accounts that are really directed by the ministry. So, we've recently received some proceeds of disposition, so we do have those funds coming in for the sale of school sites. We also have an accumulated amount from a previous number of projects, and it was from the former funding process used by the province to fund new schools. We've had an indication that there might be some timeliness to that particular item, and the ministry has suggested that we deal with it quickly so that it's not there when they come looking for it, or something like that. So, the real recommendation tonight does require board approval, because it is the movement of funds from dedicated reserve locations into the Close the Gap project, which the board is very familiar with, and it will then increase the funding available for those projects. And that's really what the motion is to do is deal with the financial part, then we will then deal with the actual projects and extension of the Close the Gap initiative in due course. Happy to take any questions related to the movement of the funds.
So, superintendent Cullen, is there any urgency about having these funds approved for movement because of the suggestion by...
I'll suggest that we ask superintendent Veerman to comment on how timely that request is.
Superintendent Veerman?
Through the chair, I think if we brought it back to the June 1st meeting, that would be, that would be fine.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right. We do have a couple of questions or comments. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. One question might be, if we pass this, what effect does it have on our budget? And because it will be moving things around pockets, anyway. I think I understood the explanation for claiming the proceeds of disposition piece. I'm not exactly sure I understand taking the New People Place Build Capacity Transfer when it, like, I'm not sure why we're using that. And at the very bottom, it says, "The updated project list now extends until 2018, and staff suggested that the additional funding remain for future project assessment." So I presume that the second sentence means, "Leave the 5.3 alone and let it sit there for the 1819 list." Is that what, okay, that's what I thought. So, could you maybe explain why we're using New People Places Build Capacity?
So could you maybe explain why we're using New People Places Build Capacity? Why we're taking this into the?
That's the portion that has the time limit on.
So rather than apply it to, say, Martin Street's budget, you're choosing to pull it into the Close the Gap? Even though logic would say the expanded Milton Street might have been a better place? No?
At the moment, the most appropriate place to relocate those funds to, in the timeframe and the descriptions that we have of projects, Martin Street's funded, Kielberger's funded, Alton Village is funded, so all of those projects are funded appropriately. So really, it's Close the Gap that has the ability to expand. So as funds go into Close the Gap, so too does the outline and scope of the project. So it has that ability to absorb those funds very quickly and appropriately.
So does that mean that we could use Close the Gap to expand an older school to absorb new pupils in effect? I mean, could, or is this, because the New People Place funding was supposed to be for growth, but it's now expired in effect? Is that what?
It was originally to fund growth projects, which we did. We completed the projects and it grew in the right amount that was required to be done. These funds were left over, and now these funds have the ability to be redirected.
Thank you. Trustee Cullen.
Thank you. I would just like some clarification so that people will understand that capital budgets and budgets for classrooms are separate. The monies that we are discussing in this motion could not be used for classroom instruction. Am I correct?
I'm going to again, probably refer to Superintendent Beerman on that, but in short, these would have to be seen as one-time dollars, for one thing. So they wouldn't be an ongoing, so it couldn't be like an annual salary or something to that effect, that it would be an ongoing commitment within the budget. They would, they really are one-time dollars. Once they're used, they're gone. And for the most part, because they came from sources that were related to the capital asset component, they're typically redirected in there, so there are some restrictions on it. So for the time being, the proceeds of disposition and the NPPs do have some of those restrictions, but I think for confirmation, we should confirm with Superintendent Beerman.
Through the chair, that is correct. The proceeds of disposition can only be used for capitals, capital items for students, not, or only for schools or students. The NPP actually is not sitting anywhere in our financial records. It sits with the ministry as an amount that is available to the board. So it does relate to the funding model that's in place relating to capital prior to 2010. So this is the balance that's left over, again, in our allocation, sitting with the ministry. So what this would do is we would then request that we use this remaining amount to, for closing the gap, so then the ministry would forward the money. But it is not for non-capital items.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is with respect to the last sentence of the report on page 69. The Closing the Gap Updated Project List Now Extends Until 2018. Do we have the updated project list? I know that from years gone by, I remember that list, but I'd be interested to know what the updates are.
I believe that the list has been updated and was shared with trustees, but I can certainly get that information out again. And it would be our intent to now look at expanding the scope as well. So you'll recall that, you know, the air conditioning ventilation conversations were one part of, there were a number of other categories that we'd now be able to go in and revisit and potentially expand the list beyond that. But in all likelihood, they would come into a timeframe that would be out beyond the 2018 timeframe.
And I would, can I just follow up quickly?
As long as it's a follow-up, go ahead.
It is. And so I remember there was the list of items with AC on top floors being at the top and so on. Will there be, or has there been any revisiting of that list, just in case the landscape has changed within those couple of years that this has been going on?
Through the chair, that's exactly what we're contemplating and have started to do. We just haven't got a list that we would bring forward. But it's not just the expansion of the air conditioning, it was also, there was open concepts, there was another, there was a number of different elements there that we would want to bring back and revisit all of the, I'll say, higher portion, higher priority portions of each of those topics, if you will, would be the best way to describe that. So that would be our ultimate intent, would be to bring that list back.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Sorry, through your chair, to Superintendent Cullen. Was there any thought given to spending those New People Place funds in Milton?
Where's Milton? No. Back, back to the conversation I think we had earlier, having the existing Close the Gap initiative as it is with the broad scope that it has, gives us a lot of flexibility once the dollars are in there to do a number of things. So this is really about move the dollars into an appropriately already existing initiative so that the ministry, as Superintendent Beerman indicated, so that the ministry will release those dollars to us for our control in that descriptor. I think if your question, if I'm interpreting it correctly, there might be some growth and potential issues in Milton. We would anticipate that the ministry would continue to fund growth. In fact, I would highly recommend that we want the ministry to continue to fund growth and not use dollars that the board has legitimately either created or preserved for other initiatives rather than use those dollars. You might recall that one of the projects we recently did, I think Martin Street, if I'm not mistaken, was it Martin Street? No, no, one of them anyway, proceeds of disposition were part of the ministry's funding, and we were not pleased, if you will, with the concept that they weren't outright paying for the entire commitment and need for growth, New People Places, as we thought they should. They were actually taking other parts of dollars that we had more control over, more flexibility over, so. As much as I would agree with you, we certainly have the need in Milton. I don't think this would be the right, right way to go at this point in time. Having said that, having the dollars in the Close the Gap, it remains a very flexible, fluid project scope that we could expand to address a number of different things.
Go ahead.
So my, my follow-up then is, it's not well-formed, my head is hurting a little bit right now. The Craig Kielberger addition, the 10-classroom addition is not going to get rid of the portables that are on the site. And so I think where I'm going to have a little bit of trouble is spending funds that can be used towards New People Places in an area that might not be as desperately needed as what I feel we're heading towards in Milton. So.
If I may?
I'm going to struggle, sorry.
Yep, I understand. I believe the planning solution, planning comments would be that ultimately we have another secondary school plan for Milton. It would be our expectation that that would be approved and funded by the ministry, and that addresses our long-term accommodation need. I don't believe either the board nor the ministry would put permanent capital in place, in place of portables if the portables were in fact only temporarily needed. So the real question becomes the longevity and the duration of the portables on-site and what's permanent, what's temporary. Ultimately, the new secondary school in Milton will be sized and built to address the permanent people place needs. I would not think that that would replace all the portables in Milton because it does have that typical, you know, bubble or bump in the population that would necessitate and be supported for portables as opposed to permanent capital. That would be my interpretation of the planning comments related to that. Again, the 10-classroom addition was approved by the ministry and funded by the ministry, so they did acknowledge the 10 rooms, not 20.
Thank you.
Ray?
Trustee Daniele.
Can you just remind me, have we heard yet of the request of the business case? And when the business case for capital projects is the deadline to get that in?
I'm not sure that it's formal yet, but we have heard announcements in several different places that the documentation will be coming. They send a B memo out that does outline that process, and the timelines are pretty much as we had anticipated. There will be a request that we will have to respond to by July the 15th, and then they will look for a fall timeframe to make their announcements for the next cycle.
Go ahead.
If it's July 15th, when will we be seeing the here at the board, given that, I assume you're waiting for them to make the formal request, and I'm just wondering how that'll come to board? Because the business case always does.
Going to refer to Superintendent Beerman.
Through the chair, when the similar request was made last year, there was a report that was brought forward to the board outlining what we would be putting forward in terms of business cases. So my understanding is that information should be coming shortly, so I would anticipate that at one of the June board meetings, that information will be coming to trustees.
Thank you. And I also believe the LTAP had a list within it of suggested priorities. Trust, Vice Chair Graves.
Thanks through you, Chair. I think over the next couple of weeks, I'll just be doing some research. I think there's some understanding that, that I need to come to on what this, the need is and for this project. Because I just, I see so, so many schools in Milton that have portables for 10-plus years. And it's, the community, just the timing of it as well, our community is really exhausted of, from, from that long term. And I know that we may, we're hoping to get a new high school this year. What if it's not approved in the funding? Then, then what happens? And, and then also, we're talking about two different areas as well. So I think, I think there's some research I'll need to do, and I'll probably be in touch with you on, on that, so I can come to a good understanding. Because Craig Kielberger's in the east, the new high school would be in the west. I said, if it, if it doesn't materialize, and that growth is coming back in the east, and we're going to need a fourth high school at some point. So I don't see, in the foreseeable future, I don't see the lack of need for, for permanent place in, in Milton until, you know, probably 15 years out. And just this long-term, 10 portables, 12 portables, sometimes 18 portables on a site is, is, is really difficult for the community to, to manage.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
And given all the talks of portables, maybe it's time to consider Milton District High School's schism in manufacturing and their proposal to make us more portables, because it sounds like we're going to need them.
So this report will come back in two weeks, and I'm happy to see more money going towards the Closing the Gap Initiative because with the schools that we have, from zero to over 100 years old, there is a lot of inequities in our system. And we do need to be trying to create some equity with our buildings, so thank you for that. So, the next report, thank you Superintendent Cullen, is the Board Report Update. Director Miller, report 16087 on page 70 of your board package.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Just to bring the trustees' attention to, there was a report scheduled to come to the board tonight, May 18th, secretary teacher redundant to the board. We did not bring that report because there's no need to bring that report because there's no, which is good news. But I thought I should say that publicly because this is a public document and people may think so. We did not have any redundant secondary teachers. I also want to bring your attention, we can now fill in a few days. Budget would come June 1st. Community partnership report, initial part will come June 1st, but there'll be a committee of the whole on May 25th. Program viability will be bringing a report June 1st. And the ombudsman process review, post, report will also be coming June 1st, so bring your sleeping bags that night. The operational plan for 2016-17, you can put in September for that. And the ARC announcements, we are looking likely September, possibly October, likely September, though, because if we go back to the community partnership report, that process has to be done before we can enter into any kind of recommendation around an ARC. So it will not be till the new school year. And finally, the multi-year plan? No, not finally, there's two more. The multi-year plan, I think will come to the board on June 15th. I'm not sure how we'll deal with that because it will not be ready for June 1st, so it's likely to get there for June 15th. I'm looking at trustee Grabens, she's looking at me askew. Am I talking through a hole in my head or what? It is posted, but it would only be posted for information. And it's, we don't get, and the last one is an admin procedure around spec ed classes, self-contained and so on. That will come to the board June 15th, but that wouldn't require approval of the board because it's an admin procedure, so it'll be here for information. And that's all I have to report on the reports.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the reports? Trustee Cullen.
Thank you. This evening, Director Miller, you committed to doing a review of spec ed, a full review, and I'm assuming a report will come back to trustees regarding the results of that review. When would the projected timelines be for that? And would that be something that might happen before the end of 2016? Or do you think it will extend beyond that?
It's a bit of conjecture on my part, but we will be having a meeting, I believe it's next week, we have a meeting scheduled to start sorting through it. I would anticipate that we would probably bring a report to the board, at least in a preliminary basis, in, early in the very, in the new school year. And then at that point, I guess we would have, but I would anticipate a report like this would have to be, given that one of the parameters, we'll be looking at the fiscal challenges that we will have. It will have to be pretty quick. So I, I'm kind of anticipating there may be actually two phases, one for some immediacy and one for long-term, so. But we will bring the information report to the board, and then ultimately, the results will come to the board of that review, so.
Very much.
Thank you. So we're now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. The Equity and Inclusive Education Committee met this morning, and it was a really, really fulsome conversation about living wages and community hubs and learning centers, and it was, it was absolutely phenomenal, and we can forward the minutes on to you if you like.
Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. The Accessibility Coordinating Committee met on May 5th here at the board office. Our work was focused on completing the updates for the annual review of the 2015-2016 Accessibility Multi-Year Plan. We also discussed bringing SEAC input back to the committee from the presentation of the 2014-2015 Annual Review of the Accessibility Multi-Year Plan. We requested that Superintendent Echoff bring forward a discussion to the senior administration team about the Inclusive Design Protocol for System Meetings and Events. And we updated the Accessibility Multi-Year Plan for the 2015-2016 Annual Review to be shared with SEAC in the fall of 2016.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. I am tired. I forgot a few things, I apologize. With the Equity Inclusive Education, one of the requests came forward from SEAC in that we've looked at a lot of the other equity lenses, and we have not looked at the ability lens. So that's something that we, the Equity Inclusive Education Committee, will be looking at next year a little more fully. Along with, we realized that the equity lenses aren't embedded in everything such as purchasing, so that's another thing that they will be looking at a little more clearly next year. And as well, I forgot to mention that PIC met last week, and it was largely around the PIC planning. But I did want to share, last time, our last meeting, trustee L. Harrison had raised concerns about the prizes used in school fundraising. And we did bring that to PIC, there was myself, trustee Grabens, and trustee Pappen, and we brought that to PIC, and they were extremely receptive and are working on a way to craft that message to parent councils, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none, we're up to the Director's Report. Director Miller.
Thank you Chair Amos. I've only got two items tonight, because one of them we've already covered around spec ed review, and one is, I, I did send a message out to trustees, but I thought it should be mentioned in public, particularly if there's media in the room, they might want to profile this gentleman. We have a superstar in our midst, Jerry Cullen, got the McCordrick Award, which is a very prestigious award that is given out by OASBO, these superintendents and, of business and, and facilities, and it's, it is, I'm, it is a pretty remarkable achievement. It is not easy to get, and if you think about all the superintendents of business and facilities around this province, over many, many years, there have not been very many winners, factors one per year. And our very own Jerry Cullen, who was President of OASBO for a while, and the men, the great work he's done for this Board about building schools, brand-new schools, and closing the gap, has earned him a prize that I think is worthy of his work, so Jerry Cullen, congratulations. Do you want, do you want a rebuttal or something?
I, I will say one thing. It, it is a very dedicated group of individuals, so to be recognized by them was really special, so I have to say I was both surprised and honored by the, by the award, so, thank you.
Jerry, and I think this is, I was kind of joking about the press, but I think this is one of the things that we need to have a bit, you know, we really have to work on as a Board, because this, we talk about provincial mandate, public, increasing public confidence in education, that's a great example of what we've got to get out there, so that we can help to enhance our reputation out there. The second one is, and I, and I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to indulge me for a bit, because this is a good friend of mine, he's been a very good friend of mine and a big influence on my teaching career, and one of the new trustees, student trustees, Dasha, has been the subject of his debating prowess coaching, and it's, his name's Hamish Guthrie, he's a teacher at White Oaks, and Hamish has been a teacher at White Oaks for forty years, and will continue on teaching next year, and a debating coach, he has taken teams to Oxford, he's taken them out west, and he's in Halifax this week, and the reason I brought him up is because it was White Oaks' fiftieth anniversary last week, over the weekend, and Hamish was named to the Wall of Fame for White Oaks. And why I'm saying that is because traditionally, they're former students that get in the Hall of Fame, but the White Oaks Committee felt that his achievements and his longevity at the school were worthy of that, so I, I'm bringing it up because he's a good buddy of mine, and we go to leaf games, but I won't hold that against him, but, anyway, I thought we should mention, and...
Mentioned some of the people who was in company with?
Yeah, he was, some of the people he was in company with were Commander Chris Hatfield, I forget his name though, the drummer of Blue Rodeo, Jerry Hall, who's, used to be on This Hour's Twenty-Two Minutes, and...
Sorry, the dinosaur man?
Yeah, the, an animator, or, yeah, an anthropologist, no, he's not an anthropologist, he's a paleontologist. So he was in, he was in very good company of White Oaks graduates, and I, you know, I think about how sometimes we don't honor our own, and we very, honor Jerry tonight, and here's a teacher who's devoted forty years of his life to the kids at Halt, and so, and continues to do so. On my report.
Thank you. So we're now up to Communications from the Chair, and I have a couple things. First, a couple of our students did very well at the Canadian-French Public Speaking Contest. Danielle Erfin, from grade ten at Iroquois Ridge Secondary School, placed second, and Abdul Rahman Albuchi, in grade eleven at White Oaks, placed third, and they're both in the FSL immersion category, and this is a, awards that take, took place at Glendon College in Toronto, and it's a competition for all over Ontario, so for these two students to place is quite an achievement, so congratulations to both of them. I'd also like to mention that tomorrow, Odenawi Public School is celebrating their grand opening at nine-thirty, so I hope everybody will try and attend if they can. Earlier this week, we had a great multi-year planning session with a lot of our stakeholders, and I believe another one's happening tomorrow.
Yep.
And was a great revisiting of our mission, vision, values, and what the student outcomes we'd like to see for our outgoing students from the Halt District School Board, and I know that all the people in this room, and some of the missing people, will be getting together for another session to try and take all that information and input to go further. Last week, River Oaks celebrated their twenty-fifth, and there were tons and tons of people there, past students and staff, and present students and staff, and it was a great event, as well as was the White Oaks fiftieth. And I know we talked about this, I believe, in our last Board meeting, but the PVC, Program Viability Committee, or the Program Viability Report is coming for approval on June the fifteenth, and we're already getting requests for delegations, so I sort of indicated that we would probably have that delegation night on the Monday prior to the Wednesday, which is June the thirteenth, so please mark it in your calendars, I believe we are going to need it, and because we need to be able to reply, yes, we have three already, so we need to be able to let people know when we are going to have that night, so it'll be the Monday, June the thirteenth. And I believe that's it at the moment. So we're now up to trustee questions and comments, and there's already a list. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Shortly after I was elected as trustee, I started the Ward for Super Council, Council, for all elementary and secondary school councils in my ward. This is something that I saw as lacking but beneficial while I was Chair of my home school's council. After a few meetings, it became apparent that something more was needed for the secondary schools, as the council's experiences and opportunities are quite a bit different from those of the elementary schools. And so I reached out to my fellow Oakville trustees to explore the feasibility of a high school super council. All Oakville High School super councils were invited, and a meeting, our first meeting was held on May tenth. The general consensus was that this is a valuable gathering, and a spot to share ideas, and so I will proceed with an invitation to our next meeting for sometime in the fall. I wish to thank Superintendent Blackwell for all her work and support, and for facilitating this great meeting. And last but not least for me, I would like to congratulate Jordan and Clara, both students in Ward for Oakville, who are respectively the junior and intermediate winners of the Eastern Division Speech Competition that was held last night. Thank you.
Good news. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you through the Chair. I'd like to congratulate the students at Mackenzie Smith Bennett, and also Acton District High School for their wonderful contributions and the organization and leadership provided yesterday at the Inside and Out Conference that was held in Milton. I know that several trustees, along with Director Miller and Superintendent Etoff, were able to join in that celebration, and I think it was a very, very positive day, and again, great, great activities in place through the workshops and through the different guest speakers that were present, so thank you very much again to those students, and congratulations on behalf of the entire Board. About three hundred and fifty students apparently were in attendance, and also, I just am reminded that I did, was also speaking with Superintendent Newton as well, who also was able to join in that event, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. So, as part of our multi-year plan discussions, we've talked about a lot of positive attributes that we hope Halt and grads will have through, coming through our system, and one of the things that we talked about is being connected to the broader world, so it's in that I make, it's in that context that I make this comment, and that is that as residents of Fort McMurray are possibly returning home in the next two weeks, whatever that home may, may look like, and I note that OPSBA and a number of our fellow Boards have moved to provide some support, whether it be through encouraging people in their areas to contribute to the Red Cross, or whatever that may be, so I was just going to plant the seed that perhaps conversations can be had, to see where we may also be a part of supporting that community. Thanks.
You're Chair Amos, to trustee L Harrison, and all trustees, many, many of our schools
are doing fundraisers for Fort McMurray. In fact, I attended one today at Dr. Charles Best, where that little school of two hundred and sixty kids has raised over fifteen hundred dollars, so many of our schools are doing it, and I believe a message went out around that, and I, I can say we've had a few students arrive here who have been displaced from their home, and are, have arrived in our Board, and we've, I, this is an example of where we were ahead of the Ministry, because the Ministry put out a directive yesterday saying that, you know, some of these students may arrive, and they will not have any identification with them and things like that, because they're staying with relatives out in, here, and please let them in, and we'll sort all that out later. We'd already done that last week, we let some kids in without proper paperwork, well, the normal paperwork, not proper, I guess, because they didn't have it, it was, it was left behind in their house, and their house was destroyed, so we are doing something. I guess the issue is, how do we do it systematically, maybe as a, as a big system, and maybe we'll sit down and talk about that on Monday at the Mid Council.
Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. On a lighter note, on Saturday, May fourteenth, Tecumseh Public School received the benefits of a garden renovation project, thanks in part to the Burlington Alliance Church and Counselor Dennison. The school was approached by Reverend Henderson and Counselor Dennison in early April to openly discuss and brainstorm some possible activities to contribute to their school community. Reverend Henderson was looking for something to take place in May, and they eventually agreed upon beautifying the main entrance to the school with a garden, and it was a perfect project to fit into this timeline. Many volunteers offered a mourning of their time despite the rain and cold that arrived on Saturday, May fourteenth. This will be something every, everyone can enjoy and notice upon entering the school. Tecumseh School Community would like to express their sincere appreciation to Reverend Henderson and Counselor Dennison, and especially the many volunteers who came out to make this happen. The results are fantastic, and they're very happy with everything.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle.
Very briefly, I would like to thank Superintendent Newton, Principal Bob Jones, and the Equity Team, and the speed and delicacy with which they handled the situation in which we had a hopscotch game painted as a totem pole, and concerns were raised immediately, and the, the, I was really, really impressed with how quickly and how well it was handled, and the trust, and the parents' concerns were addressed, so kudos on that. Then my second piece, I know that we have a new IPL replacing Dave Lewis. Yesterday, when I was at the Inside Out Conference, one of my favorite teachers was telling me that she's been made an IPL. Could we please have an updated list of all system principals and IPLs?
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Danielle, yep, we'll, we'll get the superintendents that have the IPLs, Superintendent Zonofeld, and if you could send a message to Superintendent Hunt-Gibbons and Sol Menee, and we'll get it to you, and we'll get it to you, and it won't take very long. Yep, yep, no problem.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
There's a little bit of hiring still happening, so, I think there's, I think there's some more hiring happening right now, for some changes, so, once that's completed, and it's up to date, I'll send it to you.
Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge a school that was lost since we last met here. Percy Mary School was a beloved rural community school near Britannia and Trafalgar Road, and we lost it due to fire on, on May fifth, and I know the Milton community has been reminiscing about their time attending there, or having had their, their children attend there, so it, it's very sad for the community. You may recall, May fifth was the Student of Excellence event, and another testimonial to the great work that Superintendent Cullen does. He was, he was there in student tie, and drove directly afterwards to, to the site, and I haven't heard whether, what the, the state of the student and tie are, and lost as well, yes, yes, so I just wanted to thank, thank you for, for, and your staff, because I know that they were on staff prior to your, your arriving, and, and all of your work towards, towards that.
Thank you. And trustee Reynolds.
I just want to highlight two school communities that are really putting to task the active transportation philosophy, and are, are sort of gearing up for Bike to School Week that's coming up. Tom Thompson recently had a bike rodeo, and they, they had one hundred percent turnout of their school, whether they brought bikes, scooters, rollerblades, or walked. The Haltton Region Police were on hand to provide safety tips, and they even closed off the street so that the students could experience riding down the street, in a very safe condensed area, and I even got to try the teeter totter on my bike, so they had some really pretty cool activities. Secondly, I had mentioned this before, five Aldershot schools are, have been collaborating with public health on a Family Fun Fitness Friday night, that's free, and it is Friday, May twenty-seventh. It will happen at Aldershot High School, on the school parking lot, and as well as the field, and any, this is open to the public, and everybody's encouraged to ride their bike down and participate in the physical literacy pieces, and I believe we have the Lions Club who has offered free hamburgers, so, there we go, thank you.
Thank you, and I think that's the end of the list. So, we are now up to the end of the night. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee L Harrison.
You almost pulled a couple of muscles there, get your hands, your arms up.
All those in favor?
I should know sometimes.
Go for it. Trustee Reynolds. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and good night, everyone.
Me, what else is there?